One minute, one minute. Thirty seconds, thirty seconds. Ten, nine, eight, seven, six.
Diamond Rio. Came out in ninety-one. It's just a brain break.
Okay, folks, good morning, welcome, let's get to work, let's get to work. Good to see everybody, we're glad you're joining us today, those joining us online, those joining us on Facebook, on YouTube, and our television partner KPTS, and those joining us here in person, your bright shiny faces, good to see you today. When you walked in the door, you could have picked up a meeting agenda packet, it'll outline the order of business today, the things we'll be discussing. Always encourage you to, if you're curious about the information that we're reviewing as we make decisions on these line items, and all these motions that you're gonna hear today, you can always go to sedgwickcounty.gov, and you can take a peek at all the supporting materials that we have access to. Also, just one note, County Manager Tom Solzner's not with us today, so we have the pleasure of Deputy County Manager Tim Kaufman, so if this meeting runs long, you know where to look to. I'm kidding. All right, straightforward meeting today, let's get to work, I'll call the meeting to order for Wednesday, December fourth, 2024. Madam Clerk, first item, please.
Invocation to be led by a moment of silence, please remain standing for the flag salute.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, very good, Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Roll call, Commissioner Meitzner.
Present.
Commissioner Dennis.
Present.
Commissioner Howe.
Present.
Commissioner Lopez.
Present.
Chairman Beatty.
Present, next item.
County announcements.
Good morning, Nicole.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners, Nicole Gibbs of Strategic Communications, I have a couple of visitors here today, and we're gonna start off with County Treasurer Brandy Bailey, she is here to talk about tax bills and property taxes.
Tax bills and property tax, we're starting the meeting off with a bang, huh?
Don't you like this? I think it's an exciting day for me to talk about this. Good morning Commissioners, Brandy Bailey, your county treasurer, I just wanted to come and just let everybody know that tax bills have gone out, they went out on November twenty-six, so you should have started receiving those over the weekend, if you have not received them yet, please reach out to my office, we have about seven trays of mail that has returned back to us, and out of those seven trays so far, we're expecting another four or five trays today to come back, but out of those, only about thirty pieces of those mails, pieces have come back with forwarding addresses, so we have bad addresses, so if you have not received that bill, please reach out and we'll get you a tax bill. I just wanted to kinda go over a little bit of what you're gonna see on your tax bill this year, first, you're gonna, when you open your tax bill, there's a new item on here for Go Paperless, so we, legislation was passed two years ago, that we could go and send your tax bill to you electronically, and so now we've got that in place, we're starting to gather, and so, in your tax bill, there is a little slip that talks about going paperless, and on the middle of your bill is a registration code, so if you go out and scan this QR code, and put in this registration code that's specific to your tax bill, it will allow you to sign up to receive your taxes by email versus by mail. Second, we've had several calls from citizens about the solid waste fee changes, about why they're seeing such an increase in solid waste fees, and so in the tax bill, there's also a notification that talks about solid waste fees, and then there's a QR code that they can scan, which goes into a little bit more detail about how that calculation comes and what they should expect to see. Also in there, there's some important information that talks about where you can make your tax payments, do it online, there's a phone number you can call and make it, you can pay it in any of the tag offices, or you can walk into our office, we have seen lines out the doors since tax bills have gone out, and here at the treasurer's office, so just know, you might have to wait a little bit to get in to make the payment, but you can do that. And then on the back, on the inserts, it talks about homestead, so there's information on there, and then some of the departments have gotten us information about just some important updates for their offices, so you'll see a single sheet that has six different items on there, just so announcements from offices. So I just wanted to just come and just touch base with you, and just let you know that taxes have gone out, the first half is due December twentieth, and the second half is due on May tenth, and with that, I'll stand with Brandy questions.
Okay, thank you Brandy, appreciate the update, a couple of questions, Commissioner Dennis.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you Brandy for being here, I did get two different letters in mail from you, I thought they were Christmas cards, but it cost me instead. But I've already started getting phone calls, and I can always tell when they go out, because I do receive phone calls, I just wanna let the public know that, first of all, solid waste fees, they go for things like our tire roundup that we do periodically, all of the solid waste collection that we do, electronics that we do, so that's important, so I have got questions about that. The second thing is, yes, taxes have gone up, but the cost of government has gone up also, and this board has worked diligently trying to keep the property tax for Sedgwick County portion as low as possible. As we work through that, we left six million dollars worth of asks from our departments on the table, we didn't even address them, that's six more million dollars that we would have had to raise people's property taxes. We did cut a number of organizations, some of them have not been happy with the cuts we've had, but again, what's most important is our core services, so I just want the public to know, I address every phone call that I get, and every time that you send out tax bills, we get phone calls back, but I want them to know that we do the best we can keeping cost of government for Sedgwick County as low as possible, and we'll continue to work that, I know that we're gonna have a brand-new commission starting in January, but I don't see that there will probably be any change on the emphasis on trying to keep our tax bills as low as possible, so thank you very much for being here today, and I did pay my bills yesterday.
Yes, you did.
Thank you. Okay, Commissioners, any other questions? You made one comment that I want some clarity on for the public, you talked about the homestead opportunities, homestead refund opportunities, there's three different opportunities, I know this is the county clerk's office that processes this, could you maybe give a high-level summary of what some of this is, that some people could qualify, particularly our seniors, particularly our veterans, have opportunities to qualify for some homestead tax credits?
So if, for homestead example, if you're a resident for 2024, social security was forty-two thousand six hundred or less, you could, and then there's several different other stipulations, there's like one other stipulation out of these multiple that you can choose from, you could qualify for homestead, and like you said, the clerk's office can help address and fill out the homestead, there's also senior and disabled veterans property tax refund, and then there's a safer property tax refund, and a refund advancement, and then on here, we also how you can claim that, and then more information.
Yeah, it's actually, it's in the notice that came out, the bill that came out, I wanna encourage people, there really are some opportunities on these homesteads, particularly for senior citizens on fixed income, disabled vets, there are real opportunities to have some credits and some savings, and they're pretty substantial savings, so I wanna make sure that we...
We do get a lot of them.
When does that period open, when they can apply for homestead?
Oh my gosh.
Well, I'm asking the county treasurer, and I should be asking the county clerk, so just for...
I am not a hundred percent...
Here's my request, Nicole from Communications, can we make sure we're publicizing loudly and clearly that there's opportunity for tax credits, and when those applications are, and repeatedly communicate that?
It looks like it says January fifth, or January first to April fifteenth.
Okay, all right, so we'll get on top of that, those are real opportunities, okay, any other questions for Brandy? Our county treasurer, thank you, appreciate the work you do.
Thank you again, ma'am, I might take just an opportunity to add to this, we do have a spot on our website where you can go and change your address with, change or update your address with the treasurer's office, the clerk's office, and appraisers, we will be putting that information on social media as well.
Very good.
All right, next up, I have the election commissioner Laura Rainwater, she's here to kick off the 2025 I Voted sticker contest.
Laura, welcome, good morning.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners, thank you for giving me the opportunity to be here this morning, I'm Laura Rainwater, your election commissioner, and I'm excited to be here to kick off the 2025 Sedgwick County I Voted sticker contest. In 2024, we held our first I Voted sticker contest in Sedgwick County and the state of Kansas, one hundred and twenty-seven students in grade six through twelve submitted original designs for an I Voted sticker that was used in the 2024 primary and general elections. The winning design, which I'm wearing for the last time, was created by Yamalat Salazar, an eighth-grade student at Mayberry Middle School. More than two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand stickers were handed out to voters in the last two elections, and we had so many positive comments and messages from voters. The purpose of this contest is to educate and engage our youth on the importance of voting, young people who learn about voting procedures are more prepared for voting in the future, and they are more likely to participate in other civic activities as well. This contest provided me numerous opportunities to engage with kids in our community, teaching them about voting processes and how to register to vote. The 2025 I Voted sticker contest is open to all students in grades six through twelve who reside in Sedgwick County. Students must submit their original artwork on the templates provided on our website, artwork must be original, contain no copyright images or trademarks, and must not infringe upon the rights of privacy, publicity, or other rights of any person. It must be nonpartisan, nonpolitical, and not advocate for a party, candidate, or an issue. It must not include anything obscene or inappropriate for general audiences, the design must include the phrase "I voted in Sedgwick County," and contain the theme of voting and elections in the state of Kansas or in Sedgwick County. They must also complete the contest entry form, and parents must sign a consent form. All of these forms are available on our website at sedgwickcounty.org/elections, and the deadline to enter is February twenty-eighth, 2025, and there is no limit on the number of entries a student may submit. They may submit the entries three ways, either mail or drop them off at our election office, or they can email them to us at voterinformation@sedgwick.gov. The artwork will then be judged by a nonpartisan panel of experts in the art and design industry, and the winners will be announced at a commission meeting in April. The first-place winning design will be used in the 2025 primary and general elections, and again, I thank you for allowing me to kick off the contest this morning, and I wanna wish good luck to everybody that enters.
Yeah, Laura, when you did this last year, this was a very creative idea, and we did, we got a lot of feedback, a lot of people really loved it, and I remember when we brought the top three people here, and then announced the winner, and this is how cool it was to see their family and these young people being celebrated for this, so thank you for your leadership on this, I think it's a great idea, excited to see the 2025 designs.
Me too, thank you.
Any questions for Laura? Very good, as usual.
Thank you all. Thank you, ma'am, last but not least, I would like to introduce Chief Rob Tibbins and Lieutenant J.T. Christopherson of Fire District One, they're here to discuss the upcoming Wichita-Sedgwick County Battle of the Badges blood drive. Before they get started, we have partnered with the Red Cross, and I'd like to show you a quick video. I think you'll like it.
Wedge from the American Red Cross. And I'm Lindsay Miller, this year is the thirtieth anniversary of the Battle of the Badges blood drive, it's a friendly rivalry between our first responders to see who can bring in the most blood donations. I think it is so inspiring that for three decades, our local law enforcement, firefighters, and EMS have united in this common goal to save lives. Sure, it is a competition, and each group really wants that trophy, but they're such good sports, I doubt they even remember who won last year, right? These are the truest professionals with the highest standards.
Take it on, please, vote on.
I'll wash your car for a year if you vote for EMS.
They know this contest helps our community, so in the end, we're all winners. Join the Battle of the Badges by making an appointment now to donate blood, the need is great, and from December ninth through the thirty-first, you can vote for your favorite first responder.
Help save a life and show emergency crews the respect they deserve.
That's great.
All right, now, folks from the fire district.
Yes. Friendly competition's always helpful, isn't it? Gentlemen, good morning, welcome.
Morning Commissioners. Jeremiah Christopherson, Lieutenant, Sedgwick County Fire District One, I think the video pretty much took care of all we were gonna say this morning. We would like to take the opportunity to thank the community, Sedgwick County and Wichita have been really supportive over this last thirty years, in that first twenty-nine, we were able to get thirty-three thousand seven hundred blood and platelet products, so that's really awesome, we wanna make sure we thank the community for coming out and supporting us, we're asking that they come back out and support us one more time. Holidays, you guys, we've been through this before, holidays, family, travel, all that stuff, heart attacks still happen, strokes still happen, people get diagnosed with cancer, so that need is still there, it doesn't go away, and with weather and travel, a little few more accidents on the streets, weather may shut off another donation site, so it's really important if we can keep ours going, people could come in and do their donation, that we can keep that blood supply up, because between Thanksgiving and New Year's, that blood supply tends to dwindle with all that stuff that's going on in our lives, so, again, December ninth through the thirty-first, the community can go to the donation center at seven oh seven North Main, there's a few other donation sites that are gonna be happening with the Battle of the Badges, you can see that on the Battle of the Badges Facebook website, Facebook page, sorry. The goal this year is over nine hundred, so if we can get there, that would be really awesome, I'll turn this over to these guys to let them have an opportunity.
Well, thank you, I'm Captain Travis Rakestraw with Wichita Police Department, I am representing law enforcement today, this is a friendly competition between, again, law enforcement, fire, EMS, and when you get done giving your blood donation, we ask that you vote for one of those three organizations, hopefully law enforcement, we need all the help we can get, but there is a trophy presentation at the end of this that we would like to get, but the ultimate goal is to get blood donations at a time when donations traditionally are low, people get busy with the holiday season, but the need is still there, we as first responders see this unfortunately all too often, where blood is needed to save lives, so you get a unique opportunity this time of year to actually maybe save a life by donating blood, again, it's December ninth through December thirty-first, you can go to redcrossblood.org to set up an appointment afterwards, while supplies last, there are T-shirts available for people who give donations, so it's a great event, and we appreciate everyone's help.
Yeah, really good, Chief?
Just remember, vote fire.
There you go, yeah. A couple of things, briefly, I wanna acknowledge that Shannon Wedge, the Regional Executive Director for American Red Cross, is way big, we appreciate all that you do, thank you, this is another creative opportunity to do something really, really big, really important. Captain, you're over on our side of the block, what, any predictions on how this thing's gonna turn out?
Not yet.
You're too kind, you're too kind.
I don't wanna get too cocky.
There you go, there you go, Commissioners, any questions? Okay, again, the date's here, it's December ninth through December thirty-first, gonna be a great opportunity to do something really significant for the community, so thank you guys, we appreciate you.
Thank you.
With that, I'll stand for any questions.
Okay, wonderful, Commissioners, any questions for Nicole? Appreciate the work you do, thank you, Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Public agenda.
Okay, we did have two individuals sign up for public agenda and public comments, appreciate that you're here to join us this morning, we have five minutes, so when you come to the podium after I call your name, our friendly county clerk has a little sign, she'll let you know when the timer's up, she's friendly, so she doesn't do it in a very aggressive manner, but if you, when you get to the podium, if you can, just give us your name and address for the record, we think that's always helpful, so first up, Mr. Johnny Rothwell from CanVets United.
Johnny Rothwell, one-one-six-nine North Bracken Street, Wichita, Kansas, six-seven-two-zero-six. Good morning Commissioners, my name is Johnny Rothwell, Wichita resident and Commissioner, District One, I'm joined here today with my fellow board members from CanVets United, and in spirit, lead social worker from the Bob Dole VA Center, Kenny Barker, who was unable to attend this morning. In October, a few board members and I had the privilege of viewing the wonderful documentary Hope in the Heartland, Wichita's quest to end homelessness at the Tallgrass Film Festival. While watching, I was struck by the comments of several city council members, as well as Commissioner Beatty, and here are a few excerpts that spoke to me. City Councilmember Johnson, "The government cannot solve the issue of homelessness alone, it is going to take a combined effort of local government and the private sector to solve this issue." City Councilmember Tuttle, "I wanna help that person on the side of the street, I don't want to just drive by, I want to help." Mayor Wu, "This is not a handout, this is a hand up." City Director of Housing Sally Stang, "We also need to find ways to get out in front of this issue and prevent homelessness in the first place." Well Commissioners, I am here today to tell you about one such organization that does those very things, CanVets United. Founded in 2020, the mission of CanVets United is to provide relief to poor, distressed, and underprivileged veterans in Wichita, Kansas. We have grown into a small group of nine individuals who worked over the past few years, excuse me, we have grown into a small group of nine citizens who work to help veterans in crisis. The unique niche we have carved out for ourselves is that, over the past few years, is that we collaborate directly with our local VA social workers to bridge the gaps the VA cannot fill. So, for example, a homeless veteran is ready to be housed but cannot afford the deposit, the VA calls CanVets. A veteran has fallen behind on rent and is about to be evicted and become homeless, the VA calls CanVets. We finance the service gaps of the VA with privately raised funds to help accelerate the VA's mission to achieve functional zero veteran homelessness in Wichita. We are regular folk with regular jobs who have volunteered our time to build a great relationship with the VA and other veteran organizations. We have no overhead and no costs, every dollar we raise goes to veterans in crisis. Our catchphrase is CanVets, local heroes, local support. Our organization satisfies the wishes of all the comments that were made by our city members in the Hope in the Heartland. One, CanVets is solely funded from the private sector, we are working to invigorate local businesses to support our local veterans by proving with data, their support will bring veteran homelessness to an end. Two, we provide empowerment for all Sedgwick County residents to roll down their car window when they see a homeless veteran and say with conviction, "Call the VA, call CanVets United, here's their number, they will help you." Three, we are getting out in front of veteran homelessness, we fill requests weekly for veterans on the verge of homelessness, we are the preventative muscle for the VA counselors. When the Continuum of Care Coalition reports that there has been a thirty-four percent decrease in veteran homelessness since January twenty-twenty-three, I know CanVets United has played a major role in that achievement. CanVets is here today first to simply let you know who we are and just, and how just a few Wichita citizens are dramatically helping our city accelerate towards achieving the goal of functional zero veteran homelessness. Secondly, we hope that using this platform will inspire individuals and businesses to help sustain our work to end veteran homelessness. To that end, we would like the Commissioners to keep in contact with us, and keep us aware of any opportunities for CanVets to invigorate businesses so to sustain our partnership with the VA and end veteran homelessness in Wichita. With your help, this model we are creating, and the goal we are on the verge of achieving, has the potential to be replicated at VAs throughout the state. Help us complete our mission by bringing us into your network and make veteran homelessness a thing of the past. With that, I yield my time to the Commissioners for questions and comments.
Yes, yes, very good.
Thank you.
Thank you Johnny, questions and comments, Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you very much, I appreciate it, we have two veterans on this bench today, Commissioner Howe and I are both veterans, and I thank you very much for what you're doing for the veterans that, a lot of them don't have a voice, and you're providing a voice to those veterans, the veterans are the only people that I know that wrote a blank check on their life for our freedom, and I appreciate that so much, and anything that we can do to help you in your efforts, in your mission, let us know, we're both members also of the American Legion, so if there's something that you think of that can, we can work with through the American Legion, let us know that, we attend all the meetings for the Veterans Coalition, and so if there's something we can do there, I know that you're probably working with Hutch on that, so veterans are something that are near and dear to our hearts, and I think that this commission will support you however we can, thank you very much for being here.
Yeah, very good, Commissioner. Commissioner Meitzner?
Thank you. Two things, can you, how many veterans have you helped?
Year-to-date, we're, just through the VA alone, because we've worked with other organizations as well, but just through the VA alone, we're at eighty-plus veterans that we have either, basically, we help the VA get across the finish line, you know, so we have a veteran who's, gosh, they're ready to be housed, but they can't afford that deposit, or they need a pet deposit, and that's not a service that the VA provides, so we'll pay that, keep the ball rolling, get them housed, just yesterday, I think we prevented two veterans from being evicted from their properties. Just yesterday, I think we prevented two veterans from being evicted from their properties. So that happens a lot, too. Where like, they come to the VA, they're behind on rent, you know, and it's an emergency, they're about to be evicted, and we basically calm the storm, get them stable again, and then the VA sticks with them to ensure that these situations don't occur again. That's, and the VA's recidivism rate is down to 2.5%, and the national average is 15.
Fantastic.
Yeah.
Second of two questions. Do you want to introduce your team here?
Yeah, these are our other board members, Lisa Ritchie, Scott Ritchie, Kelly Rains, and Dave Mitzel, veteran of a.
Can you share Dave's story? Is that all right with you, Dave? Or did you rather?
Dave needs to write a book. I know that. Dave needs to write a book. Yeah, Dave is why we're here. Dave is the inspiration of CanVets United. It's beautiful.
Well, you have a great story, so thank you. Enjoyed, and thanks for all you do, Johnny, and everybody.
Yeah. I would just say, the mission, a couple of thoughts. Number one is, as a community, through the continuum of care and the coalition in homelessness, it's been a topic of conversation in this community for the last couple of years. It's been significant. And, and the reason it's been a significant topic is because when we see people having full public crisis in front of our eyes, it moves us to our core. It should move us to our core, and it has moved leadership to where we're better than this. We're a better community. And nothing rings more true is when we look at what Colonel Dennis, Commissioner Dennis, said, is that those that gave and was willing to put their life on the line, they deserve a community, they deserve a nation that cares about their, their stability and housing. And this community has targeted two specific subsets of the homeless population over the last two years, those experiencing chronic homeless and those veterans that are experiencing homelessness. And we've taken a lot of resources and attention on just those two subsets. And we believe that maybe by the end of next year, that we will arrive at functional zero for veterans homelessness in this community. That does, that's not a common thing that happens across the country. I have a lot of, a lot of credit goes to the VA, a lot of credit goes to the city of Wichita, a lot of credit goes to you guys for what you're doing. And what's beautiful about what you do is you're saying, "We fill the gaps." That, that phrase you used was so unique and so specific and so powerful. You understand there's a role for the VA, it's an important role. But you're, the role the community through our nonprofit organizations has to fill those gaps is consequential to our success. It's, it is pivotal to the success. It won't happen, functional zero will not happen for our veterans unless you guys are in the, in the fray and in the equation. So God bless you. Thank you for all the work you're doing. It is significant. You're heroes. You're heroes for heroes, and it moves us to our core, man. Thank you for all you do.
Thank you. And I'll just add at the end, I, well, two things. The counselors will, I think, would testify, which some of them could be here today, they're in a very important meeting, but they would say, their jobs, there's been their job before CanVets involvement and their job after CanVets involvement, and it just has really accelerated their work in getting veterans housed. Secondly, just whenever you guys are in front of local business owners who are engaged in this subject or excited about this subject, we'd love to be included, because we, that's how we want to fundraise. We want to engage with businesses who want to sponsor and sustain our work.
Okay, we'll keep telling that story. It's a story worth telling.
Thank you.
Bless you, guys. Thank you. Okay. Next up, Ms. Andrea Sisco.
Good morning. Good morning, Chairman Beatty and County Commissioners. My name is Andre Sisco. I live at 5015 Jade, Wichita, Kansas, 67216. I am here on behalf of seniors speaking up for senior centers. I want to thank each of the Commissioners that supported the change in the funding to several senior centers for 2025. I am sure that each of those senior centers will use the funding to meet needs, the many different needs of each of the senior centers that will be receiving more funding in 2025. It takes a lot of commitment to be a county commissioner. It is not an easy job. I want to thank each of you for your commitment and hearing what the needs of our seniors truly need to meet the needs of the senior centers in Sedgwick County. With the rising cost of so many things like utilities, food, medicine, it is getting harder and harder for the seniors to live in their homes. It is very important that we remain in our homes as long as possible. While some of our homes are not the best, that some need work on them to remain in our homes, having our senior centers in our neighborhoods play an important part in helping us keep our independence, having a meal for us daily, interaction with others, and having classes to help us know what is out there to help us live better lives. That is thanks to Sedgwick County commitment to the seniors that live within Sedgwick County. I want to thank you for your time. Please keep senior centers in mind as you're looking for the future of Sedgwick County.
Very good. Thank you. Very kind. I'll also note that Ms. Sisco also gave us the same letter. I'll make sure it's submitted into the record for public comments. A couple of questions and comments. Commissioner Dennis.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Ms. Sisco, thank you for being here. I know that you're happy with the outcome, and there are several senior centers that are happy with the outcome. I am not happy with the outcome. Reason I'm not happy is because it widened the gap with District 3 from all the other senior centers. District 3 is the least funded district of any of the five districts for senior centers. So I hope you advocate on behalf of all seniors and not just those that are in your district. Thank you.
I do advocate on behalf of all the senior centers that are in Sedgwick County. I had a very difficult time writing this letter, to be truthful, because it is in my heart that Sedgwick County stop and look at more involvement with the city of Wichita. I, you say, look at the districts, and I'm saying, my district of Oakland Improvement District, which is what I represent, is a low-income area, and it will help this senior center stay there. Without this funding, it may not have been there. And that's the simple truth, because utilities get a higher every year. I think it's a shame that any senior should have to pay any amount to go to a senior center. And that's what the senior centers have to do in a lot of cases to help keep the doors open. The city of Wichita should support their senior centers, just as other cities do, City of Hayesville, City of Derby, Mulvey, and Oakland Improvement District, because seniors are what make us survive in the years. You put a lot of dedication into this commission, and I put a lot of dedication into my home and my seniors. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sisco. I'm just asking for equity across all five districts. Thank you.
Certainly. Commissioner Maitzner.
Yep. Ms. Sisco, thank you again for being here. It's, it's kind of refreshing that in my few years of service, I think the first time you've come up and just said thank you instead of telling us what we needed to do. So I appreciate your, your thanking us. And also just wanted to, speaking in the half of the community, I know that, I don't know if you know this, but I serve on the Board of Directors of Lord Steiner, and last month, we celebrated the 10,000th meal.
20,000 meals.
20,000 meals served.
I was there because I'm part of the Derby Optimists Club, and we serve one meal a month there, the fourth Tuesday of the month. And they have a very wonderful organization. I just came this morning from the downtown shelter because my family, we buy biscuits and gravy, and I make them once a month at the day shelter downtown. It is a commitment that we have as a family to give back to the community.
Right. Well, it's another example of what Johnny referred to from other comments, that government is not the solution, the 100% solution. And, and I'm really glad that, I was out of town and not able to be there for that. I think Commissioner Howell was there.
Was there.
And, and it's actually a model, the Director of the Lord's Diner and the Director of, and I see Troy from the Cities in the Office, but it, your model there is a model that, is going to advance into the homeless shelter, I believe, the MAC Center in downtown Wichita to help that. So thanks to you, to that effort, because that was just a trial originally with Derby.
Yes, it was open in February, and, and that helps a lot of seniors in my neighborhood, as well as the outer areas that can come and stop and get a meal between. Oakland is only serving at the Oakland Activity Center from 5:00 to 6:00, and that's all we're able to do at this time. But it is a commitment by the Derby Recreation Commission, the Oakland Improvement District, and the Lord's Diner to help provide that extra, because it does help the seniors with meals.
And having Derby Rec Center helping, and it's just an example for the community to know that there's, when we all kind of get together and try something and it works, it's very beneficial, and I hope that that continues on into the MAC Center and the homeless world as we're, as we take those steps. But thank you for being here. Thank you for saying thank you.
You're welcome.
Have a good day.
Ms. Sisco, one second. Commissioner Howell.
I don't need to say anymore, really, Chairman, but thank you for the chance to speak. I just want to say thank you as well for being here. It's refreshing to have feedback after we do things on our budget, and your advocacy has taken, I don't know how many years, eight years, I think we've worked on this.
A year or two.
And again, let me just say again, eight years we've worked on this and finally got something done. And this is, I think, one of the areas of our county that has the greatest needs, and you're fully involved in all kinds of different ways people don't even know. I remember I used to go and visit the Veterans Hospital on Veterans Day, and you were there doing your thing, helping people at those events.
39 years I worked there.
There you go. 39 years. You served on the Oakland Improvement District for the longest time, and it's a thankless job. I'm sure you make a lot of money there, right? Make no money there at all. It's a volunteer position essentially, and I, you know, I just think that you're involved in so many ways to help people. And I was able to visit the, the Lighthouse Church there a few weeks ago. I was just going to say, there's some good people in that community, and so I appreciate your involvement in so many different ways. Thank you for what you do. That's all I want to say. Thank you.
You bet.
Okay. Ms. Sisco, thank you. We appreciate you.
You bet.
Appreciate your advocacy on seniors. Thank you. Okay, I will appreciate those who spoke today and those who visited. I want to make a motion to receive and file public comment.
Second.
A motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Maitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Next item, please.
Consideration of Minutes, Item A, Regular Meeting Minutes of November 13th, 2024.
Commissioners, unless there's an objection, all Commissioners were present for Items A and B. So do you have any question? I'm going to take those into one joint motion. Do you have any questions or feedback on the meeting minutes on November 13th or November 20th? Seeing none, I'll make a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of November 13th and November 20th, 2024.
Second.
A motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Maitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Next item, please.
New Business, Item C, Approval of Statement of Final Cost and Assessment Rule, Establish Public Hearing Regarding Proposed Special Assessments for Certain Road Improvement Projects in the County and Provide Notice thereof.
Okay. Lynn Packer, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, Lynn Pack, here Director of Public Works and County Engineer. I am here today with Garth Herman, Gilmore &amp; Bell, our Bond Counsel. We are here today seeking your approval of the Statement of Final Cost Assessment Rule and Notice of Public Hearing for four separate special assessment projects, and asking you to establish January 8th, 2025, at 9:00 a.m. as the date and time of four public hearing and authorize a notice of such public hearing to be published and mailed as required by law. The four projects that we are seeking approval of final cost for are Dry Creek Estates, which include 34 lots, had a petition authorization at $2.19 million, and a final cost of $1.484,964.11 when the project was said and done for all Project Cross. Drater Estates is the other project. It had 30 lots included with a base authorization on $931,000 and a final cost just under at The third special assessment project is Stonewater Edition. This is the Phase 1 paving that included just, I believe, 24 lots. Base authorization was $975,000. The final cost of the project came in at $781,050.72. And the fourth and final project for your consideration is Stonewater, another Stonewater phase, which is the drainage portion of it for, that affected 50 lots, and that had a base authorization of $700,000 and a final project cost of $562,520.37. At this time, I'm going to have Garth come up, and he'll give you the how, when, and why.
Okay, wonderful. Garth, welcome this morning.
Thank you, Chairman, Commissioners. Garth Herman with Gilmore &amp; Bell, the county's Bond Counsel. Lynn did a very good job of explaining the background on this. So as, as you will recall from prior special assessment projects, how this works is generally the developer, but 100% of the property owners request that the county make these improvements that serve a defined benefit district. They do that by submitting the petition, and they request that the county make those improvements, and then once the final cost of the improvements are done, that the county then goes through the process to specially assess those costs back against those benefited properties. And so that's the point where we're at right now, is the final costs for these four projects have been known and completed, and so this is the first step in the special assessment process. So as Lynn mentioned, the, the action items for the county commission today would be to accept the Statement of Final Cost, accept the assessment rule, and approve the Notice of Public Hearing that will need to be mailed and published in the county's official newspaper to provide notice of that public hearing that will be held on January the 8th of 2025. At that public hearing, any interested parties can come and, and, you know, make statements to the county commission, but then at the close of that public hearing, the county commission would formally adopt the special assessment resolution that formally assesses these costs against the benefited properties and the amounts set forth. Once that public hearing and assessment resolution have been approved, there will be a approximately 30-day payment period following the date of that public hearing, during which any of these property owners, if they would like to, can pay all or a portion of the special assessments being levied on their property. To the extent that any of those are paid, then those would obviously not be further levied on their property. But to the extent that any of them are not paid, then in the summer of 2025 budget and property tax cycle, then those assessments would be levied against those property, and they would show up on the property owner's tax bills that would go out in November of 2025. The costs of this project that are not prepaid during that assessment period, they will be included in an upcoming bond issue that the county will issue in the spring of 2025 in order to, you know, provide funds to the county to reimburse the costs that the county actually used to make these four improvements. So with that being said, I will pause for any questions that you may have.
Okay, Garth, very helpful. Appreciate the presentation, Lynn, and your supplemental information, Garth. Commissioners, do we have any questions or comments? Okay, Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Chairman. This may be a question for Lynn. I'm not sure which one should answer, but, so again, the total, the total amount we would need to bond for our four projects, did you have that added up for us?
I do not.
And again, I just, I can see it here. I can probably do the math myself. I just was curious, but one, curiosity, I guess, is why is such a range? The first one of these is 11,000, a little more than $11,000 per lot. The last one of these is $43,000 per lot. Can we, why is there such a huge range of specials per lot?
So each project included different items within the special assessment per what the developer was seeking for those, for those subdivisions. In the case of Stonewater Edition, for example, that was a drainage only. It is, it only affected a portion of those lots, I believe. And then the Phase 1, as another example in Stonewater, again, only applied to a portion of those, I think 34 lots versus 50 lots. And so two different, completely different items of cost were in those petitions. Drater Estates and Dry Creek Estates, again, different sizes and different infrastructure in those projects. We, they are all paved roads, but again, they may have more drainage, longer roads in those subdivisions.
So just to be clear, so the Stone Water Edition, did it have paved roads as well or just the drainage only?
It is paved, but this was only for Phase One of the paving. So not all the addition has been paved yet.
Okay. Now, are these areas that there are existing homes or are these homes yet to be built?
They are, I believe, now under construction, just starting.
Okay. So there was, basically, this is us doing specials for the developer. And so, so I understand if this lot doesn't sell and there's not a house constructed, what happens to the payments for the specials for that particular lot?
The developer or some other entity owns that lot now and would pay that until such time as it's sold.
And maybe I'm misremembering, but in some cases that those specials are not collected until a home is built. So this, this is structured. Am I saying that wrong? I don't know. But I think I've seen before in some places where there are specials out there, but until someone buys and constructs a home, there's not any specials collected. But not, maybe I'm not saying that correctly, but in this case, we are.
I think I understand what you're getting at. And my understanding is each of these lots will be assessed. Once that notification goes out and the hearing is set, we pass out thirty days, they will all be assessed. We're not holding back on any lots because they haven't sold.
And in all these cases, are these ten-year specials or?
These are fifteen-year specials.
Fifteen, for all four of them?
That's correct.
Is that our standard now?
It is. It has been for a long time.
Okay. All right. That's all my questions. Thank you.
Very good. Appreciate that. Commissioners, any other questions? Lynn, Garth, thank you so much. I'll move to approve Statement of Final Cost Assessment Rule and Notice of Public Hearing, establish January eighth, 2025, at nine a.m. as the date and time for a public hearing, and authorize a notice of such public hearing to be published and mailed as required by law.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Thank you again. Appreciate you guys. Okay, Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item D, Consider Request for Property Tax Relief pursuant to KSA 791613 in the amount of $2,526.93.
Justin Wagner?
Yes, thank you, Chairman, Justin Wagner, County Counselor. This item that's in front of you today involves a single-family home located in the city of Hayesville. It was damaged by a fire on January twenty-ninth of this year. KSA 791613 provides the boards of county commissioners may, and I would note this is discretionary, there's nothing required in terms of any granting of property tax relief, but it provides that the Board of County Commissioners may grant property tax relief if a structure has been destroyed or substantially destroyed. The meaning of that is if the cost to repair the structure exceeds at least fifty percent of the value of the structure before the damage occurred. In this case, the county appraiser did review this property after the fire that caused the damage and determined that it was eighty-eight percent damage. This particular property is a little bit unique in that the board did actually consider this initially on May eighth of this year and at that point did not approve the the tax abatement request. Based upon comments from commissioners, it wasn't clear, you know, to staff at that point whether the perhaps the timing of the fire, the timing of the application, the consideration of the board may have been a factor in the denial. And so at that point, staff did still process it for a potential reconsideration and that's why it's on your agenda today. I know some of the the comments, I believe, at that time were that the property owner did enjoy the house through the entirety of 2023 and I think those were some of the taxes that were being discussed that were 2023 taxes. At this time, the applicant has paid off all of the 2023 taxes on that property. The 2024 taxes, which represent the status of the property as of January first of 2024, so before the fire handful of weeks, were just recently assessed and remain due in full. The structure has been repaired and the property owners reported to the county clerk's office they began living back in the property again on October thirteenth of this year. So it's based on what they indicated to the clerk's office, they did get insurance proceeds and that, and I would point out that I think their comment to the effect on insurance proceeds was that they weren't really gaining anything from those, but that they did cover the cost of paying the contractor for reconstruction. I don't have all of the the finite details in the insurance proceeds, but that's not necessarily something we normally get on these. The structure is the owner's homestead and was prior to the fire. Staff recommendation on this is to take whatever action the board deems appropriate on this. You have three different options. One would be to approve the property tax relief in full for 2024 in the amount of $2,526.93, not to approve the property tax relief, or to approve a portion of the requested property tax relief. Any of those actions can be taken by a simple majority vote. I would note that when you're in analyzing this, the statutes and the county's policy on this do point to looking into whether the budgetary constraints would be an issue as to whether you you would find not granting property tax relief. The backup materials have a breakdown which property taxing jurisdictions, it's obviously not just Sedgwick County, the city of Hayesville would be impacted by this, I believe the Fire District as well, and there's a handful of other taxing subdivisions that are impacted. And so it does allow you to take that into account. Again, there is no required action from the board to approve anything on this. It is at your discretion. I'd be happy to stand for any questions you might have.
Justin, that's helpful. I think you nailed it, but I want to make sure I'm clear on it. Sedgwick County, the Board of County Commission has authority to exempt all the taxes of property taxes, not just our twenty to twenty-five percent portion. We can, we have the authority to exempt them from even the city taxes, township taxes, Fire District taxes, I mean, all of it.
Yeah, and you can do a portion, too.
Okay.
It doesn't have to be, you wouldn't be bound by the statute to do all of that. And certainly you could make a determination that you wanted to grant some property tax relief, but not the full request.
Understood. Okay. And for nine months, a little over nine months, they had no use of the home, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Questions or comments from the commission? Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you. They did have some use of the property in early 2024, correct?
That's correct. And maybe a slight clarification, my answer to the chairman, would they, I guess they would have been about eight and a half months probably out of their house.
That was what I was trying to clarify.
But that's correct, Commissioner. They, for about four weeks in 2024, they would have been in the home before the fire.
And it was eighty-eight percent destroyed. So full deduction probably doesn't apply because it wasn't a hundred percent destroyed, would it?
The the statute and the policy don't draw the line other than if it's substantially destroyed at fifty percent or more of the before damage value. So in this case, it passes that threshold. That's probably, in this case, more of a calculation for insurance, but obviously the granting of relief is a discretion of the board. So if you wanted to base it on, on, impart on that or part on the time that the homeowner may have been out of their home, you could certainly do that.
Okay. Well, last time this came before us, they had the use of the property the entire time and I couldn't see any reason to abate property tax when they've had total use of it during that entire period. This is a little different situation, in my opinion. But they did have use of it for about eight and a half months. It wasn't a hundred percent destroyed, so they did have an asset there that that they should have been paying on. I would lean more towards a partial abatement, a certain percentage of it. I don't know if I'd put a dollar figure on it, but if you look at eight and a half months, that's probably thirty-six to forty percent of the time that they would have had use of it. So some, some percentage in the seventy, seventy-five percent of the total cost, I'd feel comfortable with that. But beyond that, I don't think I'd feel comfortable. Thank you.
And Commissioner Dennis, oh, Chairman?
No, go ahead, please.
Okay, thank you. I would, and I think it's a higher percentage than you indicated. I think it would be closer, probably in the seventy-ish percent range. What I think, if that ends up being a motion that you would make is, I would probably suggest a pro-rata being part of the motion, and then the calculation can be done by the clerk's office as to how that would fit into any potential order if the motion would carry. Let me know if you have questions on that.
Okay. One question, and Commissioner Howell. This statute, this legislation, does this only apply to residential? What if a business was to have a fire? Do they have the same opportunity?
It's a very good question, Chairman. The statute originally, when it was first enacted, only applied to homesteads destroyed during a disaster event. It's been broadened, I believe, at least three different times by the legislature. The statute now indicates that it can apply to any structure. So it does not have to be a homestead under state law. We, the board hasn't yet updated the policy on this to clarify that. We haven't had any come in front of you either that weren't homesteads to this point. But that is something that I think that this board will need to look at in the future simply because there was a state change, state law change on that. We were, part of the time, we were waiting on some clarification from the Kansas Department of Revenue as to how they're interpreting that statute. We did get some of that clarification.
Understood. Okay. Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I'd like to bring up some history of this. I was in the legislature, starting in 2011, for four years. And at that time, there was a tornado that came through our community and wiped out large portions of our county, where there were hundreds of people impacted by a force of nature, if you will, that took, you know, basically displaced hundreds of people from their homes all at the same time. At that time, you know, the Red Cross comes in and does what they can do and searchers come in and they can do what they can do. People trying to find shelters and there's construction companies that come in and try to, to clean all that mess up. And there's just so many people involved in that. The question was asked, well, it does, it seems kind of cruel that right after this tornado, we receive a property tax bill in the mail. My fact it was even forwarded to, to, you know, another address for a home that they've already lived in, but the home is no longer there. It's gone. And so we worked on legislation to kind of address this. And it was intended to be addressed at, you know, a, I remember vividly the debate. I wrote the bill and worked for two years to pass the law. And I thought we did a good thing, but since I left the legislature, this thing has morphed. Now it's including things like, and may, correct me if I'm wrong, Counselor, but includes things like rentals and includes things like individual homes or individual properties. People are actually talking about using it for other kinds of property, not even a homestead at all. I mean, at the end of the day, this is, this has evolved into something that not intended at all. And I regret now working to pass the legislation. I wish I hadn't done it. And it's on our platform, right, legislative platform right now to repeal the law that I wrote and passed back in 2012. I think it's, it turned out to be a bad piece of legislation. I don't blame these people for applying for relief. I mean, take advantage of every opportunity to, to benefit, you know, to benefit, benefit your situation, whatever situation you happen to be in. I don't blame them for doing it. I do blame the legislation that's created a kind of a mess out of what I thought was a good thing to begin with. And so I'm going, I intend to work very hard to repeal that law. And I think we ought to have a policy that says we just, we just reject these things outright because it's not in tune with what was intended at the beginning. This is, and I, I have voted against these in the past for the very same reason I'm going to vote against this one today. I don't think this is appropriate use. I believe in fair and flat taxation. Taxation should be uniform and equal. And again, if you don't know, your property taxes are in arrears. I don't know these folks' situation. I don't know them at all. But they got through the process and that's notable. They, they survived. They got through the process. Now they're living back in the home. Guess what? This is not, this is not a reason to go backwards and say, we're going to have some charitable act towards someone who's actually survived their situation. I assume they had home insurance. They may have had family or other charitable solution, you know, helps to get them through this process. But whatever it was they did to get through this process, it's behind us now. And so I don't, you know, I don't, I don't see there's a reason to do this now. I will, I will be voting against this today. I'd be glad to make a motion to deny the, the application for those reasons. I'll make a motion if you want, Mr. Chairman, but I'll wait to see if there's any other comments first. Thank you.
Okay. Other comments? Commissioner, Commissioner Meitzner?
Yes, thank you. Again, my, my light's not working.
I understand.
Thank you. I would agree with what Commissioner Dennis was saying about some kind of prorated. I mean, it is, it is the law, although the rules, as Commissioner Howell has stated, he doesn't like them and regrets them and wants to change them. But until they're changed, it is eligible and I think it's been healthy that we always review. It seems like we only have one or two of these a year, maybe one. And we look at it and, again, I've not talked to the resident, I don't know who he or she is. I don't even know what the address is. But, but I, under the circumstances, I agree. Maybe I'd be glad to support a motion of a seventy-five percent prorated abatement on the twenty-four. Is that right? The twenty-four taxes is what they're talking about?
That's correct, Commissioner Meitzner. It is the twenty-four.
Because twenty-three is paid. Twenty-three is paid. Okay. Thank you for the information.
Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, I think I'd like to make a motion. I move that the board partially approves the property tax relief in a prorata amount of seventy percent and makes the following findings contained in an order and authorize the chairman to sign and ask our staff to calculate the seventy percent and present that tax bill.
A second. Okay. We have a motion and a second. Commissioner Howell?
Yeah, thank you, Chairman. I'm not going to make a substitute motion because I think that's, you understand, you understand the motion on the floor. If you don't like this motion and vote no, I'll make another motion after this one and I will make a motion to deny. But I'll let this motion sit for a vote and we'll see how this goes. But just want to encourage my colleagues, if you vote no on this motion, I'll make a motion afterwards to deny the application. Thank you.
Okay, very clear. Well, we have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Chairman, I apologize. Just
Hang on.
Quick point of clarification. Commissioner Dennis, I think it, sometimes there, I apologize because there are, there's two sides to the sheet you might be looking at. I was going to ask if there are findings that would be included within your motion. And if that is the case, I wanted to point out one clarification, I apologize for this, is that anything in there where it talks about precluding granting budget relief, I should say, would not preclude granting the requested relief in the amount that is included in the motion. But if that's, if that's your intent, Commissioner Dennis, I'd suggest reading the proposed findings.
Sorry, I did not turn your page over.
Thank you.
I will add the stipulations at the, at the findings at the end. There is a homestead. It has been substantially destroyed. The budgetary restraints of the county and other impacted taxing subdivisions preclude granting the requested relief. And I don't have any other findings at this time.
And to clarify on the precluding, would it be, it does not preclude granting the seventy percent abatement?
Senate said.
Okay. And if that's, as long as the second's okay with that, Chairman, I think that would be a sufficient motion.
Okay. Okay, Commissioner, we have a motion and a second. Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Chairman. Sorry to speak one more time, but I just want to be really clear. One more, one more thing about this. Again, you said it earlier, this is permissive. This, you, the previous speakers have said this is the law. But to be clear, the law doesn't tell us we have to do this. The law just says we can.
That's correct.
It authorizes us to do it if we want to. And because of that, if we don't change the law by repealing this, this statute, which is what I think needs to happen, if we don't repeal that, I do think we ought to have a policy for ourselves that says when you have this situation, this is not what this is intended for, in our opinion. And we would, by policy, you know, encourage our staff essentially to process this as a denial because I have no intention to pay any of these ever. I think that this is, this is a, a abuse of what was intended. And I don't think this is where we ought to be. So I would, I would invite us to, encourage us to have a policy to deal with these. So the, the public that we serve, they have clarity as to what to expect from us. I don't like the uncertainty. And we have been inconsistent over the, over the last couple of years on these and I don't like the inconsistency either. With that in mind, I'll be consistent. I'll be voting no. I'll be voting no. Thank you again.
Okay. Commissioner Dennis?
Yeah, I apologize for coming back in. But first of all, a lot of what Commissioner Howell said earlier, I agree with. I think we do need to clarify some of this because it does not all apply to every different situation as the way the law states now. So working that through the legislature is something we probably ought to do. But in this case, it's not fair that someone has lost their entire home, or at least eighty-eight percent of it, for a period of eight and a half months, but they still have to pay the full property tax on it. That's why I support this. Thank you.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Excuse me. No. I apologize.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Thank you. Motion carries. Thank you, Justin. One second, Madam Clerk. Okay. Four, one. Okay, Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item E, ZON 2024-00-00043, Zone Change Request in the County from SF-20 Single Family Residential District to GC General Commercial to Permit a Vehicle Storage Yard with Protective Overlay Number 4343, generally located on the north side of West Fifty-third Street North and one half mile west of North Meridian Avenue.
Very impressive, Clerk. Scott, good morning.
Good morning. Scott Waidell from the Planning Department, here to present this item. So as you heard, the applicant is requesting to rezone the SF-20 Single Family Zoned Property to GC General Commercial with a protective overlay. This item is being heard today because individuals spoke against the application at the MAPC meeting. In terms of the request, the applicant has indicated they are requesting the zoning change in order to legally use the site for vehicle storage yard. The site is currently being used for vehicle storage yard in violation of the, of the Unified Zoning Code. However, that has not been, there's not been a notice of violation sent to them. There's been no complaint about this use at this property. So, and we enforce based on a complaint basis. So the requested protect, the requested protective overlay would place a number of restrictions on the property. There's a number of them and I just want to highlight a few of them. First, it would limit First, it would limit the permitted uses to those allowed in SF twenty and vehicle storage. So, it just adds that additional use of vehicle storage. It also establishes standards for the vehicle standard, storage use, talks about requirements for lighting, requirements for underground utilities, landscaping and screening, restricting noise, screening of trash receptacles, and paving of circulation drives. In terms of the property itself, the site is generally located to the north and west of the intersection of Fifty-third Street North and Meridian Avenue, and I would say it's about halfway between Meridian Avenue and the river to the west. The subject site consists of one ownership parcel. It's approximately one point nine acres in size, zoned SF twenty, developed with a vacant building on the site, and is currently in use for vehicle storage. I would also highlight that it is also in the city of Wichita urban growth area. In terms of context, property to the north is zoned SF twenty and developed with accessory outbuildings. One property to the west, across Gao Avenue, as you can see here, in the aerial, is zoned SF twenty, developed with a single-family residence. Another property to the west is zoned SF twenty and developed with a vacant hotel slash motel. Property to the south, across West Fifty-third Street North, is zoned OW Office Warehouse District, and has a PO, and is currently in use as farming slash ranch land, and you can see that in the aerial. Properties to the east are zoned SF twenty and developed with an assortment of single-family houses and what appears to be outbuildings and sheds. In terms of the staff report, the staff report provides information about development standards, supplementary use regulations, compatibility standards, landscaping and screening, and the recommended protective overlay. In addition, it also discusses how the requested rezoning does and does not comply with community plans. In terms of review, on October tenth, the Planning Commission held a public hearing for this application. The Planning Commission recommended denial by a ten to two vote, and that was based on the staff recommendation in the staff report. The staff recommendation was based on multiple golden factors, including numbers three and five. The staff finding was that permitting of vehicle storage yard at this location would negatively impact surrounding residential uses and introduce a commercial use within a primarily residential area. At the Planning Commission, two members of the public spoke on this agenda item. One spoke in favor, they commented that the new property owner had picked up the property and was doing a better job of maintaining it. The other individual opposed the zone change request citing concerns that included the request not being in keeping with the character of new residential subdivisions in the area and planned future development around this location, as well as possible contamination of the groundwater in the area. The citizen advisory board did not hear this item, they chose not to, and no protests were received for this case. The recommended action is to deny, and that can be approved with a vote, with three votes, so a simple majority. Alternatives include the following: You can override the Planning Commission, make alternative findings, and approve the application either with or without a protective overlay. That would require a four out of five votes. And if you choose to do so, I would also point out that there is a staff amended overlay with some cleanup of some of the text that's included as part of the M A P C minutes, and I'm more than happy to answer any questions about that if you choose to head that direction. And then, as always, you can return the case to the M A P C for further consideration with a statement specifying why you would be returning it and failure to approve or deny, and that would, of course, take a simple majority. So, with that, I'll take you through some of the images. So, here's the aerial with the subject site outlined in the aqua color. Oh, I would also point out that the city of Wichita city limits are this dashed pink slash purple line, they're located to the east. Here's the zoning map showing a significant portion of the area around here is zoned SF twenty, but as well as other zoning districts nearby. This is a map from the comprehensive plan, it's showing this area recommended for new residential. This is the urban, in, urban, this is the urban growth areas map from the comprehensive plan showing that it is in the Wichita urban growth area. This is a map from the zoning code showing that it is not in an urban area of influence, and that is because it is in the Wichita urban growth area, and Wichita and Cedric County share a planning commission, so it's not in urban growth, it's not in the area of urban influence. Here are some photos of the site and the surrounding area. So, it's my understanding, it was mentioned at the M A P C meeting that these photos were taken prior to some of the cleanup that's taken place. Looking down Fifty-third, this is looking at the building and some of the vehicles that are currently on the site. Looking at Gao, looking to the south. One of the homes in the area. And with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Okay, very good, Scott. Appreciate it. I would, for the commissioners, two things. Number one, counsel provided in some options and some language, the, the full protective overlay language is also in that. So, the supplemental information we got, you have all the, all the accessory protective overlay information is now included in that, so we can access that easily. Before we move on to comment, I want to give commissioners an opportunity to, for experte communications, if anybody has had any experte communication on this zoning case. Commissioner Meitzner?
I have not had any experte communication, that I recall.
I have not had any experte communication.
Myself included, I have had no experte communication in this case.
I've had no experte communications either.
I've also had none. Thank you.
Okay. Scott is the applicant here?
Yes. Yes, and their agent.
Okay.
It's my understanding. Right, guys?
No, I'm just the agent.
Okay, sorry. Just the agent, and I stand corrected.
Okay. At this time, we, unless there's questions for Scott that we can come back to, hang tight, and we'll allow the applicant agent to come. Typically, five minutes, if you can just give your name, that way we have for record. Welcome this morning.
Hi, Kirk Miller, K E Miller Engineering, I'm the agent. As Scott presented everything, he, he kind of explained everything that was going on. The next-door neighbor is the one that came out in favor of it, saying how they cleaned everything up and how it was looking better. The one that objected was an agent for the subdivision to the south, and if you look at, directly across the street from this, is property that is zoned Office Warehouse. So, when that develops, people from the south won't be able to see what's going on up there The property, there's not much going on in that area right now, and this protective overlay would only allow one use of a residential on this property, and that is for the vehicle storage. And these have to be stored according to subdivision regs, they have to be operable vehicles, so it's, it's going to be somebody who wants to, to store their boat there or something like that. That's the kind of storage we're looking at. We're, we're offering up landscaping and fencing and everything else around it to help hide it from the neighborhood. This property in the past has always had commercial uses, even though it's not zoned that way. You can see that commercial building that's on there, it was some kind of a nightclub or something, so I'd be glad to answer any questions you have.
Okay. Very good. Appreciate that. Any questions for the, the agent, the applicant agent? Kirk, you made a comment that there's not a whole lot of action going on over there. There's substantial housing developments going on all around that area over there.
To the east of it, yeah, but in this current neighborhood, the way it's platted, there's a lot of empty lots, that type of thing is what I was referring to.
Okay, understood. Thank you. Okay. Any questions for Kirk? Commissioner Dennis?
I've run by that on Fifty-third quite a bit, going out to some other businesses out that direction, and the pictures show that it's kind of a mess right now. Is the intention to clean that up and make it so that it's not an eyesore to all the community around it?
Yes, and he's been cleaning it up. That's what his next-door neighbor said at the Planning Commission meeting, is it already looks a lot better than what those pictures show.
And that's, my biggest concern is the condition of the property today, is it going to stay that way, or is it actually going to be improved so that the, the community is improved?
Right, and that's the, that's the intent, yes, to make it a better property.
Okay. Other questions? Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Chairman. Just, so in terms of vehicle storage, right now, we don't know exactly what, this could be like cars or trailers, RVs or campers, anything that people want to bring out and store, that's the intent. This is a way, the way to essentially use the undeveloped property to allow people to use that, I assume, as a business, they pay rent per month or whatever.
Correct.
Is there any limit to how many people will be able, what's the limit to how many vehicles can be out there? Is there any established limit, or is just fill it, fill it up as many as you can fit on the property, or?
I don't know if there's a limit by code. Scott might have the answer to that.
Yeah, I know, there's set, I saw that there's some setbacks in the backup material. So, those setbacks are basically, you don't park vehicles on those areas, it's, it's everything inside those setbacks. Is that correct?
And what he's planning on doing is putting those, I guess for a better term, the tents, you know, where you have cover over them, you see them a lot for RV storage, that type of stuff.
Okay.
No specific number.
The tents you're talking about, we're talking about, are these fabric or metal, or what type of?
I think they're like metal frames with a fabric over them to cover the vehicles.
Okay. This is the only use, and is there still a plan, a plan for someone to live on the property as well?
No.
Okay.
Nobody lives there now.
Right. But still rural residential, so I wasn't sure that we still allow for a house to be built and someone to live on the property, but there's no one doing that currently, so.
Correct.
All right. Then that's all my questions for you. I have a question, a couple of questions for staff after you're done, but thank you.
Okay.
Any other questions for the, the agent? Okay.
Okay.
Hang close. Thank you. Any questions for Scott before I open up a public hearing for the public?
Chairman?
Yeah, please.
Thank you, Chairman. Just wanted to be clear, so the notification, there was a notification that's sent out around this?
Yes, sir. One thousand feet.
So, there's folks there to the east, those, those homes that are, it shows on that map right there, they're with, are they within that thousand-foot radius?
Yes, sir, they would be. At least the two properties directly to the east, adjacent to this, yes.
And but, but the ones inside the city limits, were they also notified, or is that too far?
You know, I do not have the protest map with me. I can look that up in just a moment and come back, but.
That's fine. So, the one person that spoke in opposition, they were, they're not living in the thousand-foot, they're representing the, the previous speaker said that they're, they're representing the neighborhood to the south, which I see on the very bottom of that screen currently. Is that what he was saying?
My impression is that they were representing this property here.
Is that agricultural right now?
It currently is. They also indicated at the M A P C meeting that they have submitted an annexation request and that they are in the stages of developing that, at least preliminary stages.
Okay. And the last time this came before us, we, what was our decision out of this commission?
I do not believe that this item has come before you.
Okay. I was thinking that we saw that.
Yeah, I know, we've had a lot of cases.
My briefings, I, my briefings were confusing some of my briefings with.
Oh, okay.
Okay. So, this is the first time we've seen that. Okay. All right. Thank you so much. But I guess my other question would be this, did the, when the M A P C voted to deny?
Yes, sir.
And you all recommended denial, and you say it was, in both cases, was it based on those two items of the golden rules, two and five? That was the reason why?
I think there are multiple golden rules that apply in this situation, but especially the golden factors of three and five. So, three is the extent to which removal of the restrictions will detrimentally affect nearby properties, and essentially, that is because introducing this commercial use, which is somewhat in the middle of this neighborhood, it goes into the neighborhood, we felt like it would have a detrimental effect to the nearby properties because of that. And then, the same also is the relative gain to the public health, safety, and welfare as compared to the loss in value, and because of those adverse effects, detrimental effects to the neighbors, we felt like that would also fit. There are others that do fit as well, but they weren't prominently discussed, and that was number two, the suitability of the subject site for the uses which has been restricted. It is currently, it can be developed as residential. And also, conformance, number six, conformance to the requested change to adopted or recognized plans, well, it is partially in conformance with the comprehensive plan, not completely in conformance with that, and that is outlined in the staff report. So, there are a number of them that also apply. And then, now that we've been through the public process, at least through the M A P C portion, number eight, opposition or support of neighborhood residents, well, that's kind of split at this point.
Yeah. And so, the total protest percentage was less than twenty percent?
There were no protests.
No protest?
Yep.
But they were given the chance to protest?
That's correct. Yes, sir.
And again, I'm not familiar with this area. I know Commissioner Dennis said he drives up and down there. I don't, and so, I, I don't know what else is up and down that street, but looking at that map, looks like there's a few houses to the east and some quite, quite a distance from the road there, but to the south, but I don't see much else there that is, maybe there's some, some large lots, I guess, right, not too far from this to the west. But there's not a lot, there's also something, it looks like maybe a tree farm or something to the west of that even. So, I guess, I don't know, there seems to be not a lot of character necessarily, it's not like there's a, a large area that has a certain character. I guess I would just say it that way. Seems like there's a lot of different things happening up and down that street, but. Why wasn't this a conditional use versus a zone change?
I do, oh, it's because it's SF twenty as opposed rural residential. I had that same question. So, in rural residential, you're, you've got the opportunity to provide, to apply for a conditional use, to do vehicle storage, in SF twenty, that same opportunity is not allowed.
Well, the reason I bring that up is I would, again, there's not going to be a lot of structure on this property, not a lot of, not like, not, not a lot of capital investment on this property if, if this is approved, but as a conditional use, we would have the chance to come back, protect, maybe, maybe put a sunset on this, go back and look at this five or 10 years from now. But as a zone change, that's permanent. So, I, I'm, I'm concerned about the, the permanence of what we're doing today. I mean, this person might be a really, might have great intentions to clean, clean it up, but down the road, it might look, you know, much different than what was intended today. The final question, about the groundwater, what's the concern about groundwater specifically? These are operable vehicles, no one's doing maintenance there. What's the concern about groundwater?
I believe that it was in general concerns of just oil or other fluids leaking from the vehicles while they're on the property and then getting into groundwater.
I guess, I guess I would say these vehicles exist somewhere, so if they're leaking, maybe a bit concentration on this property, but these vehicles exist, so if they're leaking, they're leaking somewhere.
And I would share that that was brought up as a public comment, not by staff, so that is one of the comments that was received at M A P C.
Okay. Well, that's all my questions and comments. Thank you.
Okay, very good. For some clarity, because this is in my district, to the east, it's a brand-new housing development that's being developed right now, a lot of higher-end houses. To the south is the moorings, and that new land to the south there is a new housing development coming. And to the east is a sandpit with new housing coming. So, this is all going to be high-end residential housing, that's all coming this way. So, just some clarity on what's out there. Okay. Scott, hang tight. I now want to officially open up the public hearing, and for anyone that would like to supply a public comment, you're welcome to come to the podium and apply a public comment on this zoning case. Okay. Last one more time, just for clarity. Would anybody like to supply public comment on the zoning case at issue now? Okay, seeing none, I'll officially close the public comment section, the public hearing, and bring it back to the bench. Commissioners, any questions or comments? Okay. I'm happy to make a motion. My motion will be based on the staff-recommended report, including that the permitting of the vehicle storage yard would negatively impact surrounding residential uses and bringing in commercial within a primarily residential area. So my motion, I'll move to deny the zone change and follow MAPC recommendations.
Second?
We have a motion, a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Scott. Thank you, planning staff. Okay, Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item F, resolution ensuring quality of life spending by Sedgwick County government does not exceed sales tax dollars apportioned to ad valorem tax relief.
Hey, Justin, you're back.
Yes, thank you again, Justin White, our county councillor, bench hitting for Tom Henry from our office. He had previously drafted this resolution that's in front of you today, capably presented on at least a couple of different occasions in front of the board. So I'm planning to forego an in-depth presentation, introduction to this. I know the board's quite familiar with it. Did want to clarify that the recommended action on this particular item is to take any action the board deems appropriate. With that, I would close my comments. I'd stand for any questions that any commissioners might have.
Any commissioners have any questions?
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Thank you. You know, as I look into this, the resolution itself, the second and third, whereas references the sales tax vote back in 85, which was specific to one-half property tax relief and the other half of up 1% to, quote, "county, road, and bridge projects." So I'm not sure why whereas and whereas, number two and three are even part of this because there's no reference to quality of life in what the voters approved. And I'm still even more confused about the quality-of-life world as well. But I don't think this is a very consistent resolution from my perspective to try to relate quality of life to a 85-voter sales tax issue. So can you clarify why?
Commissioner, I'll clarify from the drafting perspective of our office in drafting this. I defer, again, I think the commissioners are all familiar, the Commissioner Howell's asked, requested this, I defer to him on the kind of the policy or underlying rationale behind that. But from the drafting perspective, the intent behind this is that there's the pledge of one-half of the one-cent sales tax would go towards property tax relief. So this would essentially be more or less an earmarking of how that would be utilized by Sedgwick County if this resolution would be adopted. But again, I would defer further to Commissioner Howell on any policy or rationale on that.
Okay. Well, okay, I guess you can try to explain. This seems a little bit confusing, and when you're talking quality of life, that's a big word that's really not defined, or maybe it is defined. And I'm wondering how many quality of life we are excluding from this resolution that are not listed in that Section 1. So I'm not sure this is ready for prime time personally, but I'll defer to hear what others have to say.
Okay. Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I think that the wherethes are simply just explaining the background of our sales tax, where it came from and when it was established and that type of thing. It's just historic information. And what that question said, by the way, I don't think it actually used the word Kellogg in it. I tried to, go ahead, sir.
Commissioner, would you like me to, if I go grab my computer, I can pull it up.
That'd be fine. And while you're doing that, I'll just say here, it talks about infrastructure, and we know, you know, for the state's formula, we share this sales tax revenue with all the 20 cities, including Wichita. Sedgwick County and Wichita obviously have a focus on Kellogg, and we have had for a very long time, since this vote was taken. Other cities don't necessarily have any access to Kellogg, so they use the money for infrastructure improvements. And again, I'll make the argument, but for the sales tax, those pieces of infrastructure would exist or be taken care of or maintained by whatever other source of revenue that they have. So if it's not available through grants or whatever, the only real discretionary opportunity these other governments have, including ourselves, is to increase mill levy to cover those obligations. This generates money for us, so we don't have to do that. Again, I know there's a belief out there that sales tax dollars potentially are just slush fund money, and we use them, you know, without discretion. And I strenuously disagree with that. I think that we're very careful with the dollars. But sales tax dollars that come into Sedgwick County, we have focused on infrastructure, including Kellogg. In fact, I looked back to one of the projects I was involved in back in 2015. Did you know that Sedgwick County was the single municipality that supported the matched funds for KDOT to improve the Kellogg and 235 exchange there? That came from Sedgwick County. I think it was either, I think it was $11.3 million we put into that. It was a 90-10 matched program. So we have done quite a bit of work on Kellogg from the sales tax, but we've also used that money to offset the cost of infrastructure, bridges and roads around the county. We've done that every year since the sales tax was passed. And I do have to parse my words just a little bit here. It's not a one-cent sales tax, it's a 1% sales tax. And one-half of that revenue, in other words, one-half of a percent sales tax is dedicated towards infrastructure per law, because it was a mandate from the voters and through state law, that's what is required to be for that purpose. And I will argue that does in fact offset property taxes. The other half is more discretionary. We can spend it on anything. In fact, it's the most flexible dollars we have in our budget is sales tax money. We can use it for Sedgwick County Zoo or what other, any type of spending we like. So essentially, without thought, we put the same dollars, Lindsay might disagree with me a little bit here, but the dollars end up in the same pot as property tax dollars. So if someone wants to say, where's my property tax dollars going to fund? We could argue that those property tax dollars, in part, go to things like, there's 14 things listed here, things like Sedgwick County Fair, for example, or River Fest. And they may not want their property tax dollars going to that, but if we tell them their property tax dollars goes to fund the Sedgwick County Sheriff and the Sedgwick County Jail and the Sedgwick County District Attorney and tornado sirens and 911 and on it goes, they don't seem to have much problem with that type of spending. So the genesis of this resolution is to clarify where, this is really less about sales tax, it's more about property tax. This creates prohibition on using property tax for support to these 14 entities listed here. With exception, we fund salaries at the Sedgwick County Zoo first, and we take care of our buildings with capital, our capital improvement, maintenance, or construction as needed that we approve as a board, it can be taken care of with property tax dollars. If there is a shortfall, and there's not enough revenue coming in from sales tax to pay our staff at the Sedgwick County Zoo, we can in fact still use property tax dollars to do that, if sales tax dollars doesn't have enough revenue. So what this does, it gives us a guardrail. And I don't know, Lindsay, I was going to ask you, I don't think you have this, maybe you can talk about this off the top of your head, but since I've been a commissioner, how many times have we spent end-of-year money? We deemed it is, you know, budget performance has been good, and we use end-of-year money for all kinds of things in this county. And some of the things are really extraordinarily, you know, important things. Some of the stuff maybe we could disagree on, but there's been, almost every year, there's been some effort to move, you know, some dollars towards things like, I can start listing them here, but you know what I'm talking about. Is that list available, or can you please speak to that list?
So Lindsay Provozzo, your CFO, if we're talking about these specific areas, then I would say there's probably not a ton that we have done as year-end, but you are correct. Typically, in January, we will bring a list of year-end transfers to the commission to save money for or do other things. But yes, there are other times where we do community program funding, and those requests tend to come at the end of the year, yes, if we have better budget performance than expected.
Well, I would argue the phrase in the middle of this says, "Such spending shall include but not be limited to." And the thing that makes these the same is these are not Sedgwick County government operations. These are outside of Sedgwick County government's control. We fund them. One exception is we have one employee, DP, and we have 112 employees at Sedgwick County Zoo. That exception, we block grant, well, I'll take that back. There's a few other these other, we, Sedgwick County Park is ours and Interest Bank Arena is technically ours. But again, those things, to the extent that we want to have those quality-of-life things in our community, we have to take care of them and operate them. We should operate those with sales taxes, the intent. But when someone comes to us and they say, we want to have, you know, some dollar amount for some extraordinary thing, extraordinary thing, that's, they see this as a place to go get revenue, we would have the opportunity then to say, we have to take it from sales tax. If there's sales tax revenues available, we could consider that. If there's not, we probably should say no. This gives us a guardrail, a right to say no. Property taxes, the genesis of this is property taxes are reserved for core functions of government. You don't fund things outside core functions of government with property taxes. That's the intent. So I don't know what's confusing about this. It's really straightforward. By the way, this is, I use the word "guardrail." This can be repealed, it can be rescinded, it can be updated or changed and modified. I would say even with it in place, if the commission so chooses, they could say, we understand what the resolution says, but notwithstanding that resolution, that's a guideline, it's a guardrail, we still want to do something specific. I don't know that you have to rescind this necessarily, say we wanted to provide, if you will, revenue to some project, although it forces us to say, we have to say no. It gives us a valid, legitimate, and understandable reason to deny some requests, perhaps, gives us a principle to live by. And that's the intent. And again, I know there's some concerns about recession. I'll probably talk about that in just a minute. But to the extent that there's questions about this resolution of why are these wherethes there and what's it trying to do, I hope that's clear enough. I have a few more things I'd like to say, but I'll stop talking. I've been talking for a while. See if there's other comments and questions. I'll come back and maybe wrap this up.
Okay. Commissioner Meitzner.
Yeah, just a brief follow-up. Commissioner Howell, I appreciate you trying to explain, you said quite a lot there. But in the middle of that, did you say that we have discretionary, the commission has discretionary ability to, I didn't exactly, to spend what we want to out of that, the sales tax? Did you mention that?
50% of this is not, it does not have any specific connection to any particular type of, must type of spending. We have discretion on 50%. The other half is for infrastructure.
I disagree with the ballot that says one-half to sales tax, to property tax relief and one-half to the county road and bridge projects. We don't have that flexibility.
Okay.
Unless there's other, is there other sales tax revenue we get besides this? We don't get any other regular sales tax from the state?
Commissioner Meitzner, I'm not aware. And Lindsay's also indicating there's no other sales tax that Sedgwick County receives. I did want to clarify, because I know the question come up about the 1985, the resolution that put that up to a vote, the way it's worded, the pertinent portions are that the county's pledging one-half of the revenue received from the sales tax to relieve the tax levies of Sedgwick County, and then it goes on to say, and to pledge the remaining one-half of 1% to county road and bridge projects. It doesn't specify Kellogg, but it does specify those two things.
Kellogg is fine. That's not, I don't care about Kellogg. But I just wanted to make sure, and I don't mind an effort to try to clean some of this up related to the larger quality-of-life world that we face every year in our budget process. But unless I'm really comfortable with this, I don't see the correlation. And I sure don't want the public to think that we've been taking money from that 1985 voter-approved referendum and said, well, we'll just take some of that and spend it over here or there. So, thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Dennis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Lindsay, your question, one-half the sales tax, which you were talking about, the remainder half of that to be apportioned for these quality-of-life, what would that number be, the most recent number of sale tax?
So for 2020, the actual half of that was 19 million, I'm just going to round it, 19.6 million. And we are just below that, trending just below that so far this year.
Okay. So it was a little over 19 million?
Yes.
And what our 2025 budget includes is 13.8 million?
Correct.
So we're still looking at 5 million plus of and beyond that. Okay. Another question, this sales tax money that we get and goes into our general fund, right?
Correct.
And it's fungible?
Yes.
We can use it for whatever we want?
Yes, just like property tax or any other general revenue.
The public elected these five commissioners to decide how to apportion that money. That's our job. We do it every year. We start in February, we vote on our budget in August, every year. And that's our decision on how to do that. But what this does is that it handcuffs all future commissioners so that they don't have a choice, that it has to go this way or no way, because this is what the resolution says. I know what Commissioner Howell said, that it can always be changed later on, but it's very difficult to change something later on because there's politics that come into that. We faced that when a previous commission thought that they were smarter than future commissioners and said that we had a mill levy cap. And it took a lot of political will to eliminate that because it handcuffed all future commissions. And that's exactly what this is doing, it's handcuffing all future commissions because we're smarter today than any future commissioner is ever going to be. And we know better. So I don't understand why that we would ever set ourselves up in a situation where we're saying that, all you future commissioners, we're going to do it our way and you don't have a choice. In addition, I just found out that we got about $5 million worth of money that is going into the general fund, that's not going into these quality-of-life programs, correct?
Yes.
Well, what that does to me is it sets expectations for all of these organizations saying, well, look, you're going to use tax money, sales tax money for it, and you didn't give me all my $5 million that I could have had. I need more money. And believe it or not, that's happening every single day. I get emails constantly based on our 2025 budget, especially from one organization that says, wow, you've cut chip funding. We didn't cut anything like that. But we get emails every day that says, we cut chip funding. And that's because they're trying to take and use the public to argue their point that they didn't want to cut. Even though we give them a million dollars a year, that's not enough. And that's exactly what's going to happen with all these organizations when they say, well, you still got another $5 million that's tax money. I want that. You're going to keep cutting us. And they're going to start doing the same thing that the Extension Center is doing, is they're going to keep sending us emails, even though they're not valid emails, but they're arguing their point. So I am completely opposed to this because the money is fungible. And every commission that gets elected here, and the five people that sit on here are going to be different five people in the future. But I'm not going to say that I know better than they know on exactly how to spend that money. And it has to be done my way because I know what's right. So there is no possible way I would ever handcuff future commissioners, and I would never vote for this proposal. Thank you.
Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do plan to make a motion here shortly, so you'll have a chance to vote no, but that's fine. A couple of things here. Can we use, even with this passes, can we use sales taxes to fix a bridge or pay for a 911 if we want to, or sheriff's department? Can we still use sales taxes if this passes to fund those things?
As far as I'm concerned, I assume you're asking me that question?
Whoever, yeah, I think it's a legal question, but, or a finance question. If this passes, is this prohibited in any way, spending sales tax dollars to fund things like a core function of government? Let's say, our favorite discussion is the sheriff's office, okay? Can we use sales tax dollars to fund something in the sheriff's office if this passes?
The gap, the delta?
Sure.
It would not be prohibited to be spent on that.
It would not be prohibited. Okay, good. If this passes, could I use property tax dollars to fund some, I hate to pick on something specific, but let's just say, say Sedgwick County Fair wanted to install a roller coaster and they asked us for $5 million, and there wasn't sufficient money to do that. Could I use property tax dollars then to give $5 million to Sedgwick County Fair to install a roller coaster?
Based on the dollar limits identified in the resolution, we would say that there was not enough funding to do that, but I would...
Unless there was, but, and then we have a decision by the board, we could say, yes, there's enough money, or if there's not enough money, we're going to say no. Okay. Gives us a guardrail. Okay. That's what this is intending to do here.
But I do want to be very clear, though, in that the way we will do our reporting, the way we will post revenues because of requirements under state law, we won't be able to show that specifically. It's going to be a dollar cap compared to a dollar spend. It won't actually be that we're spinning out of like a specific pot of sales tax funding. I just want to be very clear on the record for that.
Let me also say, do you have, do we have any idea, if I was to list up, I think arguably, what the core functions of government are, I've listed them cantically here today, but has anybody ever added that up and said, core functions, we have grant funds, we've got fee funds, we have sales tax funds and property tax funds, there's a few others. Has anybody ever added up the core functions of government that are born, if you will, through property taxes? How much money do we suspect, or are we paying, we levy $200 million this in current budget, and all goes towards the, I'd say, core functions of government today? In fact, I would argue, someone says the money's fungible. I want to make an argument to our legislator, legislative friends and to the constituents and our taxpayers, that every single penny you pay in property tax dollars is going to pay for core functions of government. That could theoretically today make that comment, although it's semantics, as you said earlier. And because it's fungible, I could make the argument that there's even $5 million left over out of this fund that's not going to, if you wanted to connect these dollars to those 14 things, there's still $5 million left over. There's funding potentially things like, again, if you wanted to find some other things to say that may be discretionary, GWP is a good example, or whatever, there's other things we could say. Is there enough spending on things like the Sheriff's Office and 911 and Election Office and on it goes to get us to $200 million?
There is, but remember that 200 million is all five of your property tax funds. So, that includes WSU, that includes aging, it includes bond and interest. And so, even within some of those functions, I would say, you have not historically as a body identified all of those as core areas. So, I don't mean to split hairs with you a lot, but I would, we would probably want to restrict it to our conversation to the general fund, property tax levy.
And so-
And then, yes, there's more than ample spending on all of those core areas that you talk about to cover that. Yes.
Right. And that's my point. If I go to Topeka and I say, we're doing everything, we're very conservative on property tax, again, I love Exploration Place, don't get me wrong, but we gave them $2.5 million a year ago. You know what the conversation was in Topeka last year and during the session? You guys tell us that you're very, very conservative, you don't, you can't find any place to cut whatsoever, yet you give away, we gave $2 million to CAC, yeah, I supported it, I voted for it, $2.5 million to EP, which I supported. We just earmarked $2.5 million to Elephant Exhibit, which I supported, okay? And we can still do those things with sales tax. But when I go to Topeka and say, we have no place to cut property tax, we're so efficient and so conservative, there's no place to cut. Their immediate and always say, oh, you just gave a couple million dollars away to this and that. And they name those specifically as their argument that we're not being honest with them. So, it's not just semantics. When I knock on that door and talk to a taxpayer who's about to lose their home because the property taxes are too high, and I'll say, you know what, we're really conservative, we don't waste your money. And they say, yeah, but you're giving all that money to, and they name one of these things. And I can't afford to go to that, because I can barely, I can't pay my electric bill, I'm about to lose my home. And that conversation's real. It really does happen. If I tell that person, you know, I know, but that's just a small portion of your property taxes goes to these things, that's not very satisfying. If I say to them, 100% of your property taxes goes to pay for really important parts of government, things like roads and bridges and public safety and human services, and there's also some general government, things like communications manager's office, counselor's office on on it goes, HR, finance, okay? Those are parts of running an organization. You have to have some of that overhead organization stuff to actually have an organization that functions, so general government. If I tell them, all your taxes are going towards these things specifically, you know what, they're like, well, I understand that, and they're satisfied. So, it does make a difference. This is not a guardrail that can't be changed or modified, and I understand you think this is handcuffing a future commission. We've been handcuffed on all kinds of things that former commissioners have voted for. I don't want to start listing them here, but you know what I'm talking about. I don't think this is handcuffing, this is a principle to live by. It is not going to substantially change what you do in finance. But it does create a very solid argument to our taxpayers and to the legislature that we are not wasting property tax dollars as they contend we are today. And that's why this resolution is imperative. It's not just semantics. It gives us the argument we need. Mr. Chairman, I don't know what else to say about this. I will make a motion that we adopt this resolution today. If people want to vote no, that's totally fine. I'll try this again in January. I'll try it again two years from now, as long as it takes. This is going to continue to come up. I believe there's going to be support for this at some point. And it does matter. So, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to adopt the resolution.
If you hang tight, Commissioner, there's a couple of questions and comments, and then we'll move forward. Commissioner Dennis?
Lindsey, just a real quick question. Can I say today that because the sales tax is fungible, can I say, go out and tell the public, even though we got $19 million and we're only spending 13.8, can I legally go out and say, we did not use property tax money for any of these quality of life projects because we, this fungible money, we used sales tax money?
Technically, I would tell you, I can't get down to the nuance and tell you what dollar was spent on what thing, because it all goes in one big pot. But what you could say is, we have not spent more than we have collected in sales tax, and you could be legally accurate on that part.
That's pretty simple. So, that takes away his entire argument. Thank you.
Appreciate everybody's comments and their positions. Question and a comment. So, right now, roughly $19 million comes in on that 50% that we have some fungibility with, that we would typically put in the general fund and we have some flexibility with, correct? That's the number, about 19 million?
Right. The last year was 19.6 million.
19.6. Right now, these 14 entities, that number that we're talking about, the budget number we're talking about, quality of life is 13.8 million. Is that a cap, or is that just what this looks like right now is 13.8 million?
That is what was allocated to the entities listed in this resolution in the 2025 budget.
In the 25 budget. So, when the 112 employees at the zoo get their annual raises, that 13.8 number will be 14.2 or, I mean, this number, it won't stay 13.8. And we don't expect that 19.6 will stay 19.6 either. These numbers are going to change in their thresholds. Do you have any concern that that $5 million gap in the near term is going to invert itself to where the 13.8 today will someday not be enough based on the 50% sales tax? Do you have any fear that-
Based on two caveats? No, I don't have fears. One is you're speaking about the near term. Two is CIP has been excluded.
Yeah.
And I will remind all of the commissioners, because this is a good time for it, that you have quite a few pending capital projects, particularly at your parks, that most likely, had that not been a part of this, you would be in some jeopardy of not being able to do it all.
Correct, agreed. But the CIP, we will always, when we have to do a new building at the zoo or EP or there's other places, we'll always be able to access property tax funds in the general fund to do those infrastructure projects. I'll tell you where my tension is on some of these things, the conversations. The tension is, is I've sat from the bench and I've said it publicly and will continue to say publicly, that I want property tax dollars to go to the core services of county government, and anything that is non-discretionary should not be spent, property dollars should not be sent on it. I've said it publicly, we've talked about sales tax programs in the community that would help us, give us guidelines to do those things as an external source of revenue. My tension is, we have 1% sales tax coming in now, and I'm not, we're not living by that guideline now. Now, I understand fungibility, I perfectly understand fungibility. I also understand if this is just semantics, if it's just semantics, then why does it matter? If it's just semantics, then why, when we have a gap that we don't have a fear that there's not going to be enough here? If it's just semantics, why does it matter? And that's where the tension is for me. For me, this is about consistency. It's about first principles. This is about, I truly believe property tax dollars should go towards core functions and sales tax dollars should go to things that we deem are not core functions. It does not mean we don't value them. It does not mean we're not proud of them. It does not mean we won't support them. It just means we don't take property tax dollars to use those. And that's a first principle that many of us have said that we live by, that first principle. And I think this is an opportunity to put that first principle into writing and into a framework of what we do. And if it is just semantics, then I don't see the struggle with it. I really, this is consistency for me. I'll make one more final comment. And this is just, this is not a prophetic comment, this is not, this is just a comment to say that the longer these quality of life investments, the Sedgwick County Zoo, Exploration Place, Interest Bank Arena, all these places, the longer they stay dependent on property tax dollars, the more vulnerable they are.
That's right.
Because as property tax pressures that are real in this community continue to rise, where we are not cutting the Sheriff's Office, we're not cutting 911, we're not cutting these other organizations, public safety, we're not cutting those things, where we will have to look is property tax cuts and non-core functions. In my view, this is an issue of consistency. This is an issue where I have no fear, because I believe that we have enough coming in. This is where we make some adjustments to where CIP is funded through property taxes still, so we can still support. But this is also a long-term trajectory of where we need to go to protect these incredible community assets and put them on a level of funding that will give us the credibility to go to the community and say, hey, we think that sales tax revenues will be needed to do these big things and an incremental source of revenue, and this is how we've already managed the sales tax that we already have. We're already managing this this way. So, this, for me, I'm strongly in support of it, because this is an issue of consistency. I have no fears of this. I think this is the appropriate way to go, and I think that this long-term protects, better protects our quality of life assets that we value so greatly in this community. So, there's a motion on the table. I'll second the motion, but I want to make sure we get enough comment, but I'm strongly in support of it, and I'll strongly contend that this is the way we need to go.
Commissioner Dennis?
Let me answer two of your comments. The first one, why does it matter? Well, I've already brought up why it matters, is because we, every year, go through a complete budget process, and then that board makes a decision on what to do. That board should have the authority to make that decision. We should not have the authority to override that decision. And that's what you're saying, is we're going to override that decision. That board, whoever is elected at that time. The second thing I've already talked about is expectations. We left $5 million on the table, and I've already seen expectations from one of those organizations that we've cut last year, and they're going to come back to us and say, well, you left $5 million on the table. I expect to get part of that money, because you're saying that you're going to use sales tax for that, and I want the sales tax money. So, that's why I oppose this, and I will continue to oppose that, because I do not believe that this commissioner, this group of commissioners, should say what the future commissioners can do. That is a heck of a job we have. We start in February every year and don't pass a budget until August. We listen to every single department, we listen to every single one of these different organizations that we give money to that are not core functions. And then we make decisions. This past year, we left $6 million on the table from our staff that we needed. They felt that they needed that money. And we cut another million dollars out of other organizations that aren't core functions. That's our job. Why is it not our job in the future with whoever's sitting here to make those hard decisions? And I believe that we need to give them the authority to make those hard decisions. I understand what you're saying, that we've got to hold property tax and we've got to stop property tax. I just paid mine yesterday. The darn thing was $800 more than it was last year. So, that was for half of it, that was $1,600 more that I paid. So, I am not going to argue that we need to keep raising property tax. I'm arguing that this board should not be the ones that make the decision for future boards. Thank you.
And of course, and as you know, I appreciate your comments and respect your comments and respect your position. I would just contend that that $5 million excess that they would be coming to ask for, we still have the authority to say no, and that is still a decision made on the commission to steward over that excess. And those decisions will always reside for this bench in that regard. But I do, I appreciate, and I know the heart you're coming from in regards to those statements. So, Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Chairman. Just a couple of things here. So, again, without the resolution, those folks can come and ask for money today, and they sometimes do come and ask for money today. And all this resolution does is it, it does not, as I said earlier, it does not limit sales tax use. It limits property tax use. So, for someone to look at this and say, and what the resolution does not say, it does not say that all of the 19.6 million dollars this year, the half percent that goes towards something that's not infrastructure, that that's earmarked and dedicated to quality of life, it doesn't say that. It just says that those quality of life things can only be funded through the revenues, if, again, assuming that they're available, can only be funded through the 19.6 or the half percent sales tax. And that number's going to continue to grow as the economy grows. Sales taxes have gone down, every once in a while, they go down ever so slightly, and then you know what, though? They generally go up. I should have put up a chart and show you what happens to sales taxes over time. Sales tax revenues tend to climb. I don't think we're going to have major problems funding these things with sales tax dollars going forward. So, the expectations by people who think that we left $5 million on the table, so you have to give that to us, they don't understand this resolution, and I'm sorry they don't understand it, but this is not dedicating those dollars today to this quality of life. It simply limits property tax dollars from going to those things. That's all it does. An issue of semantics, why does it matter? I had someone say, why pass this? Because it doesn't really do anything, it's just semantics. And I argue, if it's just semantics, then why do you oppose it? I think I can make the same argument. I said before, there's two reasons why. To our taxpayers, it matters. And to the legislature, we're going to have some serious arguments with legislators in Topeka come in January on property taxes. I think we need to pass this here today, because we'll be set up to make those arguments as needed in Topeka. We have to fund core functions of government, and I think everyone understands that. So, we're trying to be as efficient and as conservative and as, collect as little as possible to get the job done. But this is important, because right now, their narrative is against us today. They believe we're wasteful with those precious dollars. So, it's not just semantics to me. And I hope you understand why this is not just semantics. And then finally, on this resolution, it does talk about potentially a new sales tax, and the intent of a new sales tax is to make this more legislative. So, if we were to pass a new sale tax, a new sales tax with the intent to lower property taxes, I don't think our budgets are going to be any larger, but what we see is an actual real restriction on these dollars to be, a real restriction on all these dollars to be used specifically for those purposes. Derby's been highly successful in passing sales tax initiative after sales tax initiative. First one was for Rock River Rapids, second one was for library, third one was for some parks. If I was, we were put out there in the front of the legislature and eventually in front of our electors, you want to fund these things, these quality of life things through sales tax, I expect it will pass. And what Commissioner, what Chairman said a minute ago, getting these things off of property tax protects you. Property taxes has got a target on it right now. We are not going to be able to raise property taxes like we have. I'm sorry. But if you are funded through property taxes, you are going to see a way, your funding's going to change. So, I think that getting this separated from property taxes is in your best interest, actually. We have to change how we fund these things. People do not like property taxes, and we're going to find ways to cut property taxes. You know what, I have my bill right here that our treasurer sent me this week, and my taxes went up, again, some people went up a lot more than this. Mine's about 9% increase. And there's people out there that can't afford 9% increase. We have to do something different. This conversation is going to overwhelm us in January. This is, this is strategy to help us have a better argument to be successful, so we can do what we need to in Sedgwick County. If you want to be funded, please help us move your revenue to sales tax. That's the only way it's going to continue long-term. Chairman, and once again, I make, did I make, you seconded my motion? So, there's a motion for-
Motion, there's a second.
Thank you so much. I'll stop talking now.
Okay, we have a motion. Thank you, Lindsey. Press Justin, thank you. Okay, we have a motion second. Madam Clerk, call that roll.
Commissioner Meitzner?
I'll just mention that I don't mind reviewing this in the future, but I'd like to seriously understand the legal perspective on the previous resolution in '85 and the implications there, and I'd like to understand the actual financial environment. So, I will, after I visit with legal and financial and understand directly, because there've been a lot of conflicting statements that I've been listening to. And so, at this time, and I'm all for bringing it up and review again in the future, near future, whatever, but at this point, I'm going to vote no.
Commissioner Dennis?
No.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez?
No.
Chairman Beatty?
Aye. Okay, motion does not pass. Thank you for the conversation, appreciate it. Thanks for the work that's being done. We'll revisit again soon. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item G, consideration of an amendment to the Center City South redevelopment district plan.
Hey, Brent, good to see you.
Good morning, Chairman, members of the commission, for the record. I'm Brent Shelton, your deputy CFO. The item before you is the consideration of an amendment to the district plan that governs the Center City South redevelopment or Center City South TIF district. The impetus for this is to provide TIF support for approximately a $100 million public-private The impetus for this is to provide TIF support for approximately a $100 million public-private partnership. It's about $28.5 million in public expenditure for a parking garage that would anchor a development with requiring about $75 million in private investment to support 240 approximately dwelling units and some mixed-use residential and commercial development. So that's the background that we have. A little bit of background about the Center City South TIF district. Then we'll talk about the adverse effect analysis that we have performed, and then answer questions as we, as we get to that point. So since it was established in 2007, the Center City South redevelopment, or TIF district, has been back before you on a couple of occasions because of different amendments that required county commission support. It was originally about a four-block area, roughly between English and First Streets and Main and Broadway. And then in 2008, it was the intent of the city to expand the TIF district, incorporate some area around the interest bank arena. That was initially rejected by the county commission. Some changes were made into that, that proposed expansion, and then it was approved. As a condition to receiving county support for that change, a couple of things were restricted in the ways that the TIF could be governed. One was that expenditures in that expanded area were basically for streets with a $10 million cap on parking expenditures. And then the incremental revenues that a TIF generates were to be shared, 30% of those incremental revenues were shared back to the city, the county, and the school district. So we moved forward, and then in 2016, the city proposed and then received approval from the county to expand to some additional statutorily eligible expenditures and allow for expenditures of TIF money for parks. That made possible the Nafsker Park improvements, subsequent to that, the Chester Lewis Park improvements. And so those things happened with that. Now we fast forward to 2024. In this spring, we had an announcement and a ribbon cutting for $300 million biomedical campus, which is a transformational development. It's just a block south of where we are today, within the confines of this redevelopment district. We're looking at 3,000 students, 200 staff members and faculty that would be working in this facility to support that. The city commission, or city council, I'm sorry, on November 24th, has proposed an amendment to the district plan again to allow for additional TIF revenue to be made available to support the project that I mentioned earlier, as well as to limit, eliminate that restriction on parking expenditures. Because it's an amendment to the district plan, it requires commission approval. So within 30 days of that vote by the city council to propose that amendment to the district plan, Board of County Commission and/or the school district that's affected can take one of three actions. You can vote to approve the district plan amendment. You can vote to deny the district plan amendment. You don't have to take any action. That will result in a tacit approval of that district plan amendment. Now let me clarify something, because we talk about district plans and project plans with TIFs, and sometimes that can get confusing. The district plan, basically, it's a legal description and the governance for the scope of that redevelopment district, or that TIF district. A project plan, and a district plan does require, an amendment to that requires BOCC approval. That's what you have before you today. A project plan, on the other hand, describes a project that can occur within the environs of that TIF district. That does not require approval of the county commission or the school district, but that starts or restarts a 20-year clock on the life, or the potential life of the TIF district. So before you today is a district plan amendment. And it does not change the lifespan of the TIF in and of itself. Now, in order for you to adopt a resolution today that would deny the district plan amendment, you must find by statute an adverse effect to the county to do that. In 199, in 2008, the county adopted a policy outlining five things that the commission would consider in order to determine whether or not potential TIF district or change to the TIF district would create this adverse effect. Is the project, is the potential loss of tax revenue something that would hinder effective future delivery of services? Is the project feasible without the TIF? Is there enough skin in the game from a private developer? Are the costs to the county greater than the benefits? Or do you have sufficient data to make a decision? So those are, in a nutshell, the five things that we look at to determine whether or not there's adverse effect. I'll briefly summarize what we are considering with each of these. So in terms of potential loss of tax revenue, whether or not that would hinder effective future delivery of services, the proposal that's before you would basically freeze the current incremental tax revenue share, that 30% share. It would freeze it at the current dollar level, about $370,000. So going forward, we're not going to, if you approve this, we wouldn't share in the incremental growth, because 30% of a bigger pie, we're not going to get that. We're just going to get the same-sized slice going forward, roughly about $114,000 a year. Any of the foregone taxes that, that we wouldn't currently get, we've approximated that that could amount to about $2 million over the life, 20 to 22 more years of a TIF district. So that would be the foregone number that we can kind of estimate from the incremental revenues that the project, the concept is currently under consideration would generate. So that's what you forego in conservatively looking at. But you continue to receive that $114,000. Now, when you get to the end of life, we're going to be seeing between $400,000 and $500,000 in property tax revenue from the increment back to the county. So you're looking at about a seven-year payback at the end of the life of the TIF to make up for what was foregone in the meantime.
Well said.
So is this project feasible without county funding support, the but-for argument? The scope of the, of the projects that are, that's under consideration to bring the housing and the parking and stuff to support biomed campus can't be done with the current restrictions. Remember, it's a $28.5 million investment in parking. We have a $10 million limit on parking. $6 million of that's been spent. So there's only $4 million remaining of parking eligible expenditures under the current arrangement. So that in and of itself, would, there's really no argument about that. Also, if we look forward, we're projecting that this project could generate about $11, $11 million in TIF revenue. That wouldn't be available to do this without making those amendments to the, to the plan. The additional increment would help support that, that additional $7 million that's necessary to find that, to make up for that shortfall. So is the private equity sufficient to affect a default risk? Does a developer have enough skin in the game? Now, at this point, we don't know that a developer's been identified or a site's been identified, but the city's seeking this $75 million investment. So we don't have a lot of detail about that, but I will tell you that without that private investment, there's not going to be taxable real estate to create the increment to pay this back. So they're going to have to see that level of investment in order to begin to make the funding stack work. It's just, it's still at a conceptual stage. So the numbers make sense. It's just working out those, those details going forward. And city indicates they need this tool in the toolkit to be able to move this over the finish line with a developer. Now, are the costs to the county greater than the benefits to the county? We're talking about a couple of million dollars in foregone taxes over the 20-year life of the TIF if we, if we approve this change. That only impacts us if the scope of the project is a lot smaller, or if the project doesn't occur, then that money was maybe needlessly foregone. If, however, we look at this project, the cash flow from this project supporting the success of the biomed campus, we're looking at $2 million to support a $300 million investment. So we're less than 1% of just the biomed, the biomed investment on its own. The fifth thing that we're looking at is whether or not sufficient data or notification was provided in the county. Because this is still in concept and things are fluid, we, we're working with a concept right now, not a specific plan. But based on that concept, that concept can't come to fruition without adopting this amendment. So it's, it's almost that chicken and egg argument. Do you approve this, or the tool is in the toolkit? Do you wait to see the size of the plan before approving it? So I would tell you that on a fiscal matter, this amendment would have to happen in order to provide sufficient incremental TIF revenue to make it work and to remove the restriction on the parking expenditures. Been a lot of information. Let me kind of summarize where I think we are. One is you've got a current agreement with a 30% increment share and a limit on the amount of money that can be spent on parking. Maintaining that 30% share with growth inhibits the amount of TIF revenue that's available to make a project like this work, and they can't spend more than $4 million anyway. We do, there may be some concerns about the certainty of the development that would be anchored by the, the parking garage, but it's going to require a big investment, a big private investment. And this piece alone is going to require that, that parking to support that development as well as the biomed campus. So I would tell you that the project, or, excuse me, the district plan does need to be amended to see this concept reach fruition. And if it's amended, those foregone taxes, we do have a pretty rapid payback at the end of the life of the TIF. And it's, as I said earlier, it's probably 2/3 of 1% of the biomed investment alone. So, or it's kind of a small piece. Those revenues aren't there today. So this would, would be the, a small piece to support the biomed campus. So with that, I'll answer questions. If you have, we also have a couple of representatives, Troy Anderson and Mark Elder here from the city, if you have specific questions of them.
Okay. Thank you, Brent. Appreciate that. Appreciate the work that's gone into this. Obviously, the biomed, the school and the campus and the future plans has been a big topic of conversation in this community for a lot of reasons. $300 million, big commit from the state, largest investment in downtown history. It's a big deal. So a couple of questions, and we'll open this thing up. The $2 million that we're foregoing in revenue, that $2 million only exists if this amendment takes place, correct? We're, we're not foregoing something that won't happen unless we amend the district TIF. Is that correct?
Correct. If you, worst-case scenario, that would be foregone because we freeze our share of the increment and nothing happens. But then, we're not going to be foregoing that much, because there's not that growth.
Okay. So the but-for is that this structure does not happen unless this thing is amended. That's, that's the but-for. But the question that I have, that I want some clarity on, is how is the biomed campus impacted? We've broken ground over there, right? This thing is going up. I understand the but-for. This doesn't happen, the, the parking structure doesn't exist, the housing doesn't exist. For the, you know, we have 3,000 students coming down there, we have staff. I mean, this is a big, we need the housing, we need the parking. I understand the structure doesn't exist, the but-for, but how is biomed impacted if this district TIF is not amended? Is it still going to come to fruition, or is this thing, how is it impacted?
Don't know that I can speak totally to that, but this facility provides a couple hundred at a minimum parking spaces to support the biomed campus. People are going to have to have a place to park and a place to lay their head at night. So it's necessary improvement. It's also nice development for the core area.
Okay. So this is a supplemental need for the biomed campus. Couple more questions, and we'll open it. So the, our scope is narrowed to, do we find adverse effect to the county? That's the, that's the narrowed scope. Is it normal for a TIF to be approved before a plan is developed or before a developer has been announced? Is this a normal course?
Typically, we have a little more clarity on what the deal might look like. It's not, I mean, things are fluid. So a TIF can be approved for a specific project, and another project comes along five or six years later. So things, things change.
And I understand a district TIF might have a little different, I, I understand that piece. I'm trying to find my way to yes, because of the, I want to support biomed school and the campus and the projects and this investment that's going into. I'm not a big fan of developer TIFs, but I understand this district TIF, and I understand the need here, and I want to find a way to yes to support biomed campus. So is the staff recommendation at this point, based on all you know and the month that you've spent pouring into this, is the staff recommendation at this point in time to approve the district TIF amendment?
I would recommend that, that it is, approving the amendment is the only way to see this concept get to fruition. So I would recommend it.
Okay. I appreciate that. Commissioner DeNess?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Brent, thank you very much for the discussion, and I also, whoops, sorry. Thank you very much for the discussion, Brent. I appreciate it. I also strongly support the biomed campus. As you might recall, a few years ago when I was chairman, I gave the chairman's award to WSU and KU because of this concept. So this is transformational to the community. I am 1,000% behind this project. My only question is, one of the, one of the statements you made was that there's going to be 3,000 students down there, and a lot of faculty and, and staff. And they need someplace to park. Well, will this solve the parking problem for 3,000 students and staff?
I would probably like to defer that to city that's worked on it in a lot more detail on that piece than, than we have. We'll, I'll talk about all the adverse effects, but that's the one that I'd like to weigh in on.
That's an adverse effect on this project, because what I've heard is that there's going to be like 700 parking stalls. Is that correct? Troy, you might answer.
Evan, welcome. Troy Anderson, Assistant City Manager for Wichita. Welcome. We're glad you here this morning. We appreciate it.
Yeah, Commissioners, thank you so much. So, yes, this is one project that may result from the district amendment, right? We're having a lot of conversations with a lot of developers who are, the domino effect that the biomedical campus is having on downtown, largest investment that we've seen in downtown ever, right? A parking garage to support biomed is just the beginning, right? And so, yes, there is a project that we are working towards. It, it does consist of a parking structure to support not only bio, not only the biomedical campus, but also surrounding users like residential office and otherwise, right? And this may be just sort of the first of many, hopefully, that we're going to see in the near future as a result of the investment that was made by the state and by Wichita State University and the University of Kansas. State University and the University of Kansas. And so, yes, we have every reason to believe that sort of this project that has been referenced, if it comes to fruition, right, will provide that parking necessary to support. In addition to the parking that we have in our inventory today, we also have other parking in our inventory today. It's, it's a combination of parking and another, a number of different assets that we have available. So it's not as if it's just one structure that will provide part, it's a combination of parking management within a number of our assets. But absolutely, we believe that this approval of this district amendment will help advance continued investment in downtown across the spectrum.
Okay. Well, the whole plan isn't laid out very well right now. I don't know what the scope is. From what I've heard, and this is, you can confirm or deny, we're looking at a parking garage of somewhere around 700 cars. But at the same time, you're looking at housing there, which is badly needed because you have to have housing for the people that are working there and so forth. And you're gonna have retail there. So the latest I've heard is that maybe only 200 of those slots will be available for students because housing and retail is gonna take over about 500 of them.
No, we actually think that if, it would be the other way around, that approximately 500 would be allocated to biomedical users, our students, faculty, et cetera. 200 would be, approximately 200 would be made available for residential. Again, you also have to understand in parking management, right, you're gonna have a blend, right? So for example, I'll run through a scenario. Let's say there is a multi-use structure, right? And you've got 200 to 250 multifamily residential units associated with that park. If you have a student who lives in the multifamily residential and they are attending the biomed, you don't need two spaces, right? That one space provides a balance between achieving the parking demand associated with multiple uses, right? Somebody who is coming down to frequent the biomedical center or campus might park in the structure as a transient user and then also shop at a retail location close by, right? I don't need two different parking spaces. This really advances a lot of our parking management strategies that we've been communicating to city council and the community as a whole around these kind of Park One solutions, right? We want you to, whether you live downtown or work downtown or are frequenting downtown, we're trying to reduce the overall demand that exists and the number of parking spaces that we're needing to create by creating these Park One solutions. And so, yeah, we believe that, again, this amendment will pave the way, clear the runways for not only this project, perhaps more projects like this to really continue to see the growth and investment that we're seeing in downtown.
Okay. And these are all paid parking places? Somebody has to pay to park in each one, every one of these things?
That's correct. That's part of our capital stack, yes.
And that goes back to maintenance of this parking facility or where does that funding go back to?
Yeah. As part of the city's parking fund, right? We're putting in place now, we're having some really robust conversations with city council. I'm sure you all have heard about some of those of late. In fact, there's another one coming up here next week that I'm sure you guys don't want to bother yourself with that. But yes, we are having great discussions with city council on the steps that we're needing to take to bolster our parking fund, to make sure that we're being good steward to taxpayer dollars and investing back into these assets and maintaining them in proper order.
Okay. Well, again, I go back to the 3,000 students. You were talking about 250 maybe living in apartments that don't require one parking slot, but that only solved it for 250. It didn't solve it for 3,000. My question that really nags me is, do we have a solution for getting 3,000 students downtown?
Yes. Yes. Again, in the, in the conversations around parking management, it's not as if there are going to be 3,000 students on campus at any given point in time, right? It supports 3,000 students, but we're not suggesting that there's gonna be 3,000 students in this building at any one point in time, right? We've been working closely with Wichita State University and the University of Kansas and others involved in the system, right? To know and understand on any given day, what's our peak demand, right? What's our attrition rate? There's a number of different factors that go into that. And so we've right-sized it. About 800 stalls is what we need, sort of at any given point in time to support the day-to-day operations. And that's where between a structure as we're talking today, plus existing capacity in some of our assets that we have available to us today, we believe we've put together a plan to respond to their needs.
Okay. Well, I don't wanna stand in the way of making sure that the biomed facility is a success.
Yep.
It's just I've never gotten to the point where that we are today in any kind of a TIF where that I don't really know what we're voting on. Because the project isn't really fleshed out. Most of the time, we kind of got an idea of where it's going and who the developer's gonna be and exactly what kind of retail you're gonna have and so forth. Today, it's just kind of, it's a wink and a nod and this thing's gonna work.
Well, this is, and I'll step back a little bit and I'll kind of elaborate on what Mr. Shelton was talking about, right? That what you all are considering today is the amendment to the district plan. This sets out the base, sort of rules and regulations by which each of those projects within that have to sort of play by, right? So this establishes the baseline metrics in which eligible expenses, return on investment, the return is at 100%, is it 90%, 80%, 70%, right? So under state statute, beyond the base value, the increment that is created as a result of an investment in a project can be returned back to a developer or a developer partner, right? That 100% is set forth in state statute. Same with all of the eligible expenses, right? And so all we're sort of asking is a return to what state statute allows under these districts. There are a number of project plans that may present themselves, although there's only three years left of the district, right? So the district itself has a shot clock, as Brent was describing. There's only three years left of the district. So there's only three years in which a new project plan can present itself, right? And so that's what's really before you all today is the district plan. The project plans won't, the existing project plans won't change, right? It won't change any of the existing project plans. It would be any new project plan that present themselves. We continue to pass through that base value to all the taxing jurisdictions. That's the $370,000 that Brent was talking about, right? It's only the additional value that is being added. So but-for, which is the term that we use in TIF, right? But-for the district rules and regulations, a developer and a development project may not occur. And you may not necessarily see the tax increase. So when we're saying this is sort of a chicken and an egg thing, you have to have a district in place first before you can bring a project plan in front of the city, in front of the taxing jurisdictions, right? And so this establishes those baseline rules and regulations.
Troy, well, I sincerely pray that this is successful and that this biomed facility is gonna be as transformational as we all hope.
Thank you.
I've got some reservations because I don't know enough detail. And I don't want so much of it that is dedicated towards developers at the expense of the taxpayers. So I'll vote for it, but I will watch it with very intensity as it moves forward.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Commissioner Howe.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Don't go too far. I agree with some of the comments made by both the chairman and Commissioner Dennis. I have some reservations as well. I'll just start off by saying, I don't know that this has, to answer the question, does this have an adverse impact on Sedgwick County government or Sedgwick County budget, Sedgwick County services? I don't anticipate that it will. So I think that there is an argument to be made there that I don't know that's, if that's the only reason we can say no, I don't know that I can get to that, to a no. I think there, it kind of compels me to support this. But I do have some questions. Just to be clear, this is, do we know who's going, do we know right now the person that's or the entity that's going to develop and construct this parking garage? Is that known right now or is it something that is trying to be figured out still?
So, a project that has been described, unfortunately, I'm not at liberty to discuss.
That's fine. You don't tell me anything secret, but, but to make my point though, it's not gonna be owned and operated by Wichita government. It's gonna be owned and operated by private sector, third-party entity.
So I can tell you broadly, right, our approach over the last several years is to become the owner and operator of public parking assets. I can't speak for any of the private sector investments, right? Whether it be multifamily residential, commercial, office, retail, those will continue to be private. Those public sector investments, parking structures, parking lots, et cetera, our intention is to own and operate and maintain those public parking assets.
And what's the total anticipated capital cost of this construction for this project?
So the project that has been proposed is about a $100 million project. It's a mixed-use project.
For this?
Well, so, again, I wanna kind of back up and there's a district plan and there are many projects that could present themselves as a result of a district plan. The district plan has to be created first. Then within the district plan, there are very specific project plans. In fact, I think there are, I'm gonna misspeak, there's 12 project areas within this district, right? And each one of those project areas have different projects. The project that Mr. Shelton was describing specifically that the city is working towards could be a mixed-use project of about $100 million. The parking structure that is part of this mixed-use project is about a $28 million investment.
Okay. So today, we're approving just the parking structure, part of the, or the whole TIF? Everything, everything you just described, the 12 projects that are part of this boundary are part of this discussion? Please clarify. What are we talking about here? I think, I thought we were talking about parking garage, but go ahead.
So Commissioner Howe, the, what you would be approving today is just a change to the district plan to eliminate restrictions on expenditures for parking and to basically freeze at the current dollar level of shared increment. So it's removing the restrictions that were placed on eligible expenditures, all those go away. So the city could spend 28 and 1/2 million on parking, they could spend more, but today they're gonna stop at 4 million because of the district plan restrictions that exist today. So you're just voting to remove the restrictions that exist today.
Okay.
Not any specific project. It's just this is sort of the project, if this were to happen, it can't happen with the current district plan.
Well, I guess the reason I bring this up is because to the extent that Wichita might own and operate this, there would be no property taxes to be paid.
Correct.
On this, if it was owned and operated by the city, right? Only if it's owned and operated by private sector do there, are their taxes due. And by the way, let's be clear, this is not a tax abatement. This is simply using, predetermined, using property taxes to pay for the bonds that created this infrastructure. So that's, it's not like they're not paying taxes, it's just that we're paying for the project itself with the taxes that would be owed in the future over the next 20 years. That's the intent. So we're essentially rolling that revenue back around to actually create its existence, if you will.
Yes.
And I agree with what Mr. Anderson said a minute ago. The but-for really is the key here. Again, as a parking garage, if it was just talking about a parking garage near this bioscience facility, I would assume that's owned, if it is owned by private sector, they're gonna charge a market rate for parking there. They shop, they probably don't really need this benefit because they'll structure their costs. I mean, as Commissioner Dennis said, 3,000 students and you're talking about 700 or 800 parking stalls. If you just did 200 days a year and you did 700 cars in the parking garage for 200 days a year, it's only $4 per day for that 20-year period. So I don't know that there's a major problem in terms of to pay back this. This is, we're talking about $4 per day to get that $11 million number that I think someone quoted earlier. So what I'm saying is, I don't know the but-for, how real, how necessary that is. If we're simply helping a business become more profitable, that's not the reason to do this. The question I would say is, is this gonna happen no matter what we do today? If this is just gonna be constructed regardless of our decision today, then that means that but-for doesn't have any real consequence. I mean, if it's gonna happen anyway, why would we do this?
So, let me come back to just tax increment financing in general, right? And but-for. We're seeing economic development projects, we're seeing personal, capital investment, right? Even on the private sector side, becoming more and more challenging year after year, right? Cost of construction, cost of labor, cost of real estate, right? And so, almost, almost every project that we're seeing, particularly in downtown environments, are not able to build a capital stack without some sort of incentive, whether it's property tax abatement, whether it's property tax rebate, sales tax exemption, sales tax rebate. In fact, sometimes a project might take advantage of two or three of these different incentives, right? In order to realize a project, okay? When we're talking about tax increment financing, it truly is sort of the but-for of but-for TIF, the project doesn't occur, okay? So there will always be a base value that will continue to be passed through to all the taxing jurisdiction. All we're talking about is the increment, and I wish I had my illustration.
I understand this extremely well. I understand that there's new property tax levy based on the increased value of the infrastructure that's been created.
Correct.
And we're gonna use the increase above the base to pay for the thing that it created, if you will.
Correct.
Typically, these TIFs are, you know, a lot of times we'll do drainage improvements or, you know, curb and gutter, streetlights, things like that, fire hydrants, whatever, infrastructure. But in this case, we're talking actually building a parking garage.
Parking garage is an eligible expense under state law. Yes. To your point, yes. Utility infrastructure is an eligible expense under state law. Acquisition, grading, excavating, engineering, demolition, there are a whole laundry list of eligible expenses under state law that under this district are not eligible expenses based on the previous amendments. That's what we're talking about when we're trying to say that for the district as a whole, returning to those eligible expenses that state law affords.
Okay. So I'll just say, have there, have there been some other parking garages built downtown recently that did not get this type of help? Or are we, is this, is this pretty much been always available to other projects like this?
TIF is a very common tool in the toolbox. When it comes to public parking assets, you were kind of going down this path, right? You're right. A public parking garage in and of itself doesn't generate any taxes, right? And so TIF is sort of a, so it's used in conjunction with a mixed-use project to help bridge the gap on the public investment that's being made.
All right. So I guess, again, I know this wasn't stated as a reason to vote no, and I probably won't really rely on this too hard here, but I don't like it when competition, if one project doesn't get the benefit and another project similar to it in the same area gets the benefit. To me, that's kind of unfair, picking and choosing winners and losers, you've heard that phrase before. That always concerns me a little bit. I think the but-for really is the greatest question, and I would argue, in addition to this issue of adverse effect, if the project's gonna happen regardless, we probably should say no. I mean, in any other way, the but-for really has to be real. Of course, we can't read minds, we don't know what really will happen if we were to reject this. We don't know what would happen until you see what happens. I mean, we're not fortune tellers, so we have to kind of trust the staff to tell us this is truly necessary. And so with that, again, I'm going to assume that we're being very careful and the but-for is real. The second thing, I'd just say this is, I don't like state law on TIFs. I think the TIFs have a bad name for a reason. A lot of TIFs are looked at as abuse of, you know, fairness and taxation. And things would happen regardless, whether the TIF is approved or not. Sometimes it's considered almost a gift to develop, perhaps, perhaps, because the project would go forward regardless of the but-for. You know, there is no but-for, perhaps, and they still get some kind of a tax benefit. The other people, similar to them, maybe don't get that. that. So TIFs have been abused by some municipalities, and they've gotten kind of a bad name over the years. I really wish we could change the state law on a couple of areas. This is a rabbit trail, just to stop really quickly here. I really think that each entity should have the right to vote independently without causing trouble to the other two. And second of all, I don't like the cost of resetting of these terms. Every time we modify this, we reset the 20-year clock, and I don't like doing that either. So I think there's opportunities to make TIFs better in Kansas. That's a legislative thing we could talk about in the future. Today, though, in terms of the question, I think the adverse effect, I don't think there's going to be a cost or detriment to Central County to support this. And I do agree with some of the previous comments. We have to have some parking opportunities downtown. So I guess I'll probably end up supporting this if there's a motion, but any other my concerns. Thank you so much.
Okay. Thank you. And Troy, thanks. Appreciate you and Mark being here. You know, we're not, the TIF conversation didn't happen as much over on this side. And so we want to make sure we understand it, and we're doing, being good stewards over these discussions. So thank you. I would also say that, I know we're talking about the district TIF, and I understand, that clarity is really helpful for me in particular, the district. But whatever parking garage does come up there, we have comp care crisis coming down there. We're going to need some parking spots for our comp care crisis employees down there, too. So we'll be calling to see if we can't get some help from somebody on that parking garage. And we've got a lot of employees coming down there doing great work, so we appreciate you guys. Okay. I am, I'm going to make the motion. Appreciate the discussion here and the opportunity, and we're going to champion biomed in more ways than one. So I move that the board takes the recommended action and adopts the resolution, finding that the amendment to the redevelopment district plan would not have an adverse effect on Sedgwick County.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Thanks again for the work on this. Appreciate everybody. Okay. We're going to pause the Sedgwick County Board of County Commission meeting. We've got a little bit of business we need to do in our Fire District. So we'll pause there, come back to it, and I'll call to order the governing body of Fire District Number One. Madam Clerk, first item, please.
Roll call. Commissioner Meitzner.
Present.
Commissioner Dennis.
Present.
Commissioner Howell.
Present.
Commissioner Lopez.
Present.
Chairman Beatty.
Present. Next item, please.
Public Agenda.
Okay. No one signed up for Public Agenda? Let's keep moving. Next item, please.
Consideration of Minutes, Item A, Fire Meeting Minutes of November 13th, 2024.
Okay. Commissioners, and this is an objection. I'm going to take Items A and B, combine them. All commissioners were present, so does anybody have any questions or concern on the meeting minutes for the 13th and the 20th?
Quick question.
Yeah, go ahead, Commissioner.
One of the minutes I had mentioned, I meant to say it in the other part, in the regular meeting, but I'm going to vote to approve the minutes, but the intent was to make that part of our regular meeting instead of the Fire District meeting.
We remember.
Just, no, that was good. Sorry about that.
All good. Thank you then. Okay. I'm going to combine these two into one motion. So I'll move to approve the Fire Meeting Minutes of November 13th and the Fire Meeting Minutes of November 20th, 2024.
Second.
A motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Next item.
Consent Agenda.
Mr. Tim Kaufman.
Commissioners, Tim Kaufman, Deputy or County Manager's Office recommend approval of Consent Item C.
Okay. Commissioners, the Consent Agenda is one item. Can Item C, any questions? Seeing none, I'll move to approve the Consent Agenda.
Second.
A motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Next item, please.
Other.
Anything under other for the Fire District? Seeing none. Next item.
Executive Session.
We have no executive session for the Fire District, so we will return ourselves back to the Board of County Commission meeting. Madam Clerk, next item.
Agenda.
Mr. Kaufman.
Commissioners, Tim Kaufman, County Manager's Office recommend approval of Items H through S.
Okay. Commissioners, Items H through S, any questions, any comments? Commissioner Howell?
I don't think I need to pull this off, Mr. Chairman, but I am just curious about Item N. This is the reallocation of certain positions within the Health Department, moving these back to General Fund. Go ahead. Please explain that better, I guess.
If Tim would like to speak, he's most welcome to. Okay. Lindsay Purus, your CFO. So this item would simply return positions to where they had basically been originally budgeted. There have been actions through the course of the year that have reallocated them to other places within the health grant budget to use up some of those grant dollars, but they need to go back to the General Fund to make sure that we appropriately reflect where those costs really should be. They were already budgeted there, so there shouldn't be any financial impact, which is why it's on consent, because it's a fairly benign issue. So from our perspective in finance.
There's a secondary page to this. It talks about new percent, 39%, 61%, 99%, 90%. What's that supposed to, what's that telling me?
So when you all adopt a budget and you see the FTE allocations that are listed sometimes for a multiple position in different funding sources, that's what that means. So it's just assigned to different funding sources, and that's communicating to you how those percentages are actually allocated to the different grants or to the different funding sources.
Okay. And these are positions that have been sold for a very long time?
Yes.
Okay. That's all my questions. Thank you so much.
Okay. Good questions. Appreciate that, Commissioner. Okay. Any other questions? Okay. I move to approve the Consent Agenda, Items H through Items S.
Second.
A motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner, sorry. Commissioner Meitzner. Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Next item.
Committee reports.
Okay. Commissioners, any committee reports you'd like to share? Commissioner Dennis.
Thank you. Well, I didn't attend the last Zoo Board meeting because I had other meetings that same night, but I just wanted to let you know you're not going to get rid of me. While I was not present at the meeting, they voted to keep me on as a private citizen on their board. So I want to let you know that I'll probably still come to see you once in a while when we're talking about the zoo.
Well, we'd be okay with that, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Anything else under committee reports? Seeing none. Next item.
Other.
Okay. Anything under other? I would just say that the Kansas Association of Counties is here in Wichita hosting our annual, our 49th Annual Meeting. Commissioner Howell is our delegate. They passed a legislative platform this morning. Is that correct?
Yes, we did. And actually, I met with the voting delegation last night. We made a number of changes. In fact, I suggested some changes to the platform to make it a little bit more, I guess, acceptable to the legislature, and those changes were adopted. I think it actually ended up with a really pretty good platform this year. I'm actually very, very pleased with the work that they did, and it's been a great meeting so far. The folks involved right now are just doing a really great job, and commend Chairman for speaking and welcoming everyone to the room. It was a packed house today, was it not?
Yeah.
And Mayor Lilly also spoke, did a great job. And so just really glad to host KAC here in Sedgwick County. It's been, it's been a good conference so far.
Yeah. Love to have them here. They'll be here next year as well. They were here last year, here this year, will be again next year. Come to Wichita. We love it. Okay. That's all I have. Under other, anybody else? Okay. Madam Clerk, next item.
Executive Session.
Okay. We do have an executive session today. Commissioner Lopez.
I move that the Board of County Commissioners recess into Executive Session for 20 minutes until 12:15 for consultation with legal counsel for the county regarding matters deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship in order to discuss acquisition of real property preused by Sedgwick County departments, and that the Board of County Commissioners return to this room for executive session at 12:15.
12:15. We will be back. Okay. I'll second that motion. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Okay. We'll be back 12:15. Thank you. Aye. Okay, we'll be back 12:15. Thank you.
Yeah, we're going to go to your end.[553.54]